Gary, would you do the honors?
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday and welcome to the Committee of the Whole. Doing my best DDFO impersonation. We're here to do good stuff, listen to everybody's opinions, perspectives, et cetera, and let's make magic, make some history. We're open.
All right, let me do some housekeeping stuff and then we'll really do real stuff, right? This is a hybrid meeting and we are recording it. Because it's more of a workshop format, we're going to ask when we're working on the wall in the back, we'll have a handheld microphone for folks to use. You probably can hear each other in the room. We want to make sure that the people who are online have a fighting chance to hear what's going on. And the meeting is going to be recorded. I'm hoping it will work well, but because of the workshop format, I kind of don't know for sure. If you're in the room, please sign in in the sign-in table. We need to keep records for who comes to meetings under the Federal Advisory Committee Act, so we collect your autograph. If you are online, please sign in in the chat and then we will know who is here. If you're not familiar with this building, the restrooms and the water fountains are out this door, kind of behind some pillars. The exits, we've got two exits here. We've got the one goes out towards the bathroom. This door back here goes outside towards the river. So if we had to leave in a hurry, there are two ways to do it. And lastly, I mentioned it's a hybrid meeting, but it's more of a workshop format. Just because the tables look like a normal HAB meeting, it's not. We're actually going to be up and working with ideas on the wall and doing some small group work over lunch. So it's a little, it's going to be a little different. But the purpose of the meeting is for you all to recommend what committees you want for fiscal year 2024. And the prize is names of committees, a description of kind of their scope of work and how you want to set them up. So that's the prize. So Sue.
Can everybody hear me okay? Yes, ma'am. Okay, can everybody hear me okay? All right. So, all right, reminder, meeting ground rules. I think everybody should be familiar with them. Make sure your phone is on silent, so we don't get to embarrass whoever's phone goes off. Be respectful overall. So if you need a refresher, the meeting ground rules are all on your seating, on your nameplate. And welcome to hopefully a very successful meeting to design where we're going as far as committee structure, how we're going to do committee work in the future. Everybody have a copy of the agenda in case they want it. We're going to do an overview of the Ops Work Group activities up to date. We're going to discuss the scope of the HAB work, cross-cutting topics, have reflections from the TPA agencies. We'll have a working lunch that you'll hear about more later. We'll be talking about, you know, and like I said, the whole focus is on, from a tactical perspective, how do we implement this proposed committee structure? The working group came up with a strategic plan of how we think the work should be broken up in committees. You're going to get to see how we came to that conclusion. And then it's the, how do we move forward? And how do we develop the work plan? And how do we, basically, how do we do work using this concept? So that is the whole day in a nutshell. It's a single focus. Ask questions, bring your, I hope you brought your questions. Be prepared to engage and let's do good work. And I don't have any announcements unless somebody else does. Anybody have announcements? Anything they want to say? Okay, let's get down to work.
All right. So the first piece is to remind you of what the Operations Work Group is and what it has been working on. So there's a context for what we're going to do today. And we've got a number of the work group members here.
Tom and Kristi, take it away.
All right, I guess, hi, everybody. I can talk to what, what we've started with and then Chris will, will talk to what's on the wall. The Operations Work Group was chartered to be collaborative with the facilitation team, the TPA agencies and HAB members to try to take some lessons learned from the difficulties that we've been having in the past over the pandemic and streamline the process, make sure everyone knows the process, figure out where there's some improvements we can make to make sure everyone's on the same page, that we, the work we do aligns with the EMS SAB Charter and FACA and, you know, the HAB is a unique board, but it does still have to follow the rules. And we wanted to make sure that we are being unique and following the rules. So we started off looking at just the, the sort of, the rules and said, okay, well, that one we're doing, that we're doing, that one we might need to clarify a little bit. In doing so, we identified some room for improvement with some things such as agenda development and increasing engagement with the board members and attendants. Thank you all for being here. We came up with some ideas for how we could stream, to improve the orientation process for new members. So we enacted a lot of those recommendations in the last orientation and more, more there. And looking at the committee structure to try to figure out, how do we get people engaged? How do we make sure that we are staying within our scope, which we'll talk about? And what's the best way to organize that scope so that the agencies feel that they can support what the committees want to do? There's another piece that we're working on, which is the updating the documents. EM Headquarters asked all of the EMS SAB boards this year to update their sort of operating documents and get that cleared through headquarters. So we've got a work group right now that's going through a new document that will be circulated probably next month for everybody to look at with the goal of getting that through to EM this year. What else did we do with the, oh, we, we looked at what the ideal HAB meeting looks like and how do we get to that? You know, how do we get to a space where we have an informed group of folks who are able to have an open discussion and not feel like one opinion is more important than another and really just listen and collaborate? Am I missing anything that we've been doing? Oh, it's a leaderless group. There, there are no leaders. We're all equals. So everybody has a part to play.
So the members of the group are Rebecca Holland, Chris Sutton, Tom Cecilia, Jan Cottrell, Sue Coleman, those are from the HAB, as well as representatives from each of the three agencies. So Mike and Gary have been there from DOE, Ryan Miller from Ecology, and Jeff Schramm from EPA.
So are there any questions on what the Operations Work Group is and what we're doing and all that stuff?
Who's online? We have, different screen. We have Pat Conrad, Dan Solitz, Dave Reblog, Dana Gribble, Matt Hendrickson, Rose Ferry, Sally Smith, and Tim Kovas. Those are the unique ones. There are a number of us in the room who are also online, but you can see our noses. Rob?
So again, what we're here today is to propose and to kind of redefine some of our meeting protocols and that sort of thing. And, and I think it's great, I think moving forward to make things streamlined and get better communication around is, is really a good idea. My, my question to you is, is, these are drastic changes now. Are we going to continue the Operations Committee into the future to continue to look for areas of advanced, you know, to, to improve our process? Or, you know, are, are changes better made phased in and, and working within some structures and phasing things in? But the big point I think that I'm bringing out is I think improvement is important and I applaud you for, for working on this part of it. And of course, as Mike points out, when he reads the documents, they don't match. And so that's real important to get that done. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, the Operations Work Group is not an infinite mission. We've, we've got a limited scope and a limited time to do it. I think we want to wrap up this fiscal year. Is that?
The ideal.
If there needs to be another work group in the future, then a new one will be chartered, I'm assuming.
So there, there is item 11 on the agenda is, is sort of moving forward in how things would be implemented. So there's time to, to do some of those logistical things and next steps as well. Let's check in with the three agencies. If they want to share observations about the work group or their, their hopes and dreams. And then Pam, I've got Pam in queue. Agencies?
You don't have to say something.
No, you don't have to say anything, but we want to make sure you get to say something if you have something to say.
No, I was making sure I wasn't interrupting Mike. Hi, this is Ryan from Ecology. I don't have much to add. We've, we've been talking to the committees the last couple of months and we talked to the full board a little bit. I'm just grateful for the opportunity to work in collaboration with the HAB, work group members and then the agency members. And again, I don't really have much to add beyond what Tom said about the work we've been doing and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, this is dating and from EPA and, and again, I think Tom said it really well, what the purpose was and what, you know. My goal is to have a board that's, that's working well, working well together. And, and we don't have these questions that we keep stumbling, have been stumbling on over the last few months or a couple of years even. I'm like, well, what if this, you know? Because again, I guess I want us to get back to a vibrant functioning board and, and has products to work on and, and produces the advice we're, we're looking for. And, and I think that the, the work that the Operations Work Group, and they're making a lot of progress. It's, we're, a couple of documents there's, you know, well along and I think that will help us a lot. Again, we won't be having to ask these questions. Well, how do we do this? Well, no, we'll actually be able to, to focus on, on the real mission of the, the board and not the, the functioning of the board. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mike Kirkvile. Good morning. Good to be with you virtually and in person. Everybody said it quite well, so I won't, won't add on to that anymore. It's a good opportunity for us to, if you've spent any time in those documents, you have an understanding of where the opportunities are to seek alignment and what, what the, the purpose of the content is in some cases. Some cases it's duplicate, some cases it's conflicting. What we found out during the past few months is that, quite frankly, not a lot of folks on the HAB knew what was in those documents. And it's a good opportunity to reset. I think that the objective of the DFO to expect that each of the Citizens Advisory Boards, EM Citizens Advisory Boards submit their, their documents this year is fortunate from a timing perspective that causes us to be timely in our efforts. I just want to thank everybody that's participated. It has been a, quite frankly, a team building opportunity, an opportunity for us to build some bridges. I can say that the work that I've been able to do with Ryan and Jeff and on occasion we've had Roberto as well, has just been extremely valuable to us. And then also the opportunity for the HAB members who are participating and work with the agencies has been, been very productive. It's a lot of work. It's just not all reflected on the wall. You'll probably hear a little bit more of that and certainly look forward to your questions as, as we proceed. Thank you.
Pam, I see your card.
Thank you. When we had a previous conversation about this, there was a category that included scope and budget and it was called cross-cutting. And I raised some concerns about that in terms of its functionality. I think that tri-party agencies also shared some concerns about that. Is that still here or we put that behind us and we're going forward looking at committee structure?
The, the design of the workshop is actually taking you one step back before, before that circle was filled. Because in a number of the committees, there, there were people who have shared that concern, like the, the Resource Committee circle was causing concerns. And so the, the snapshot we're going to work with on the wall today is actually the, the precursor to that, to see if the group likes that trajectory or maybe there's a different way to deal with cross-cutters.
Okay, thank you.
So it is perfectly okay to run ahead of schedule, which is where I think we are. Maybe not. Okay, Jan, and then Tom.
Tom did such a good job of describing what we've been doing in the working group. But I just wanted to also kind of step back a little bit to say that our work has gone so much faster in the working group, partly because we have high-paid management there to make sure that we keep on task. It's a very good thing. So before, this was part of an IM team just called the Procedure Manual. And, you know, it just did not move forward. Bob Sayama had it. He had a group and they put some words on paper, but it never quite moved forward. And so in this group, we've had the excellent facilitation that allowed us to work with these kind of colored paper and they're color-coded. We, you wait, there's lots to know. And so also they made a document that had all three of the foundational documents in a different color so that you could look and compare about the different documents and consolidate them into what we wanted to say. And I think that one of the objectives nationally for the EMS SAB was that all of the sites would submit their own foundational documents. But we keep saying, oh, we're different because we have the tri-party agencies. And that's true, nobody else has it. And so how do we take a document that from another site that say has already been approved at the headquarters level and take that as a kind of a model without losing our tri-party agency and our consensus board values? So this is what we're trying to preserve in the new document while at the same time not trying to reinvent the wheel. So the, the part that's reinventing the wheel is trying to redo our committee structures. So we want to align the committees with the scope and make sure that not one committee has, you know, much more of the work than the other committees. So all I can say, I want to reiterate that we have been moving to forward at a pretty good pace. And it's, you know, we've been working together collaboratively in ways that has been a pleasure. So we also get to do that today by stepping back and looking at the scope. We'll come to our own conclusions about something that we hope can make it through the full board.
Tom and then Chris.
Yeah, just wanted to speak to the, the good pace in HAB speak. We, we love wordsmithing documents in the HAB. The draft document that Jan was talking about started off at 40 something pages. We've had two work sessions each with, each that were three hours long and we've gotten through 12 pages. And the document is now down to 28 pages. So, you know, we're, we're making improvements. We've got two more work sessions set up, I think. So it's going to be a long slog to get something to the, to the board for consideration by April, but I think we're, we're on track to do it. That having been said, going through 12, 13 pages of a document in HAB world in six hours is record speed. It usually takes two or three hours to get through one page.
Chris?
One thing that I, that hasn't really been pointed out or emphasized, I think, is that this document that Jan and Tom have talked to is a requirements document. It basically takes the EMS SAB Charter and it specifies requirements that comply with that, but also governs how this, how we are going to do our work. But the key thing is this document has to be approved by Washington. It, it has to be submitted this year before September, I believe. And Mike, it's the general counsel that's going to ultimately take a look at this and approve it. DOE's general counsel?
There are a lot of folks to look at it. My understanding is DFO first, the designated federal officer, general counsel and, and others.
So one of the things that, one of the things that we've, we've kept in mind that's taken some time is, as Jan said, how do we get the essence of, of how we operate in a document, but also have it approved by lawyers? Lawyers, as we all know, like to get down in the weeds and get pretty nitpicky about things. And we don't want to get in the position where they nitpick our document to death, send it back to us, say no, and we then have to continue to revise it. But one thing to keep in mind is that this is a document that does have to be approved in headquarters by DOE.
Do we have folks online with us who have questions, who want to jump in? They're about... Dan Solitz. We've got like 18 people online. Dan, what's on your mind?
Oh, good morning. The first thing is that I can't produce a chat bubble on my screen. And the second thing is, when these lawyers take a look at it, are they, and, and they don't like what they see, if they don't like what they see, are they going to give us the authorizing statute that gives them this, the, the authority to say, well, you're not complying with this, you're not complying with that section? I tried to read that, the original document, the, the DFO, the Authorizing Act for Advisory Boards, and it's, it's, it's very dense and take a set of specialists, I think, unravel it. So I'm a little unsure as to what the authority of the lawyers is. Speak to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mike's got some thoughts.
Good morning, Dan. I, I would postulate that, that we, we will receive feedback. I think the first feedback that we'll receive would probably be from the DFO if we've communicated something that is inconsistent with FACA, is inconsistent with the DOE manual for Citizens' Advisory Boards, inconsistent with the EMS SAB Charter. And, and, you know, it's a collaborative effort. So I, I would expect that, that they're going to provide that level of, of feedback. Did I answer the question entirely or was there a second part?
Well, the second part was, I'm still trying to look for a chat bubble.
Oh, looking for a chat bubble, okay. Do you want to help, Dan? Okay, Lacy's on it and she'll work with you, Dan. Esteban?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Good morning. And I think two of the key things that, you know, because one of the things, I think we're almost to the first quarter of the year and I think that was just mentioned, I think right now, looking at, one was, I think, was it paid management? And I think like Tom, what Tom said was, you know, working groups moving along, I think, in cohesion because it can get technical. I think that's one of the things that we identify, especially talking to the public, that it can get, it's overwhelming, right? When somebody just regulars looking at this and, you know, talking about the issue. And then one of the big things, I think, you know, DC has a person that's been in DC and I think moved out here, the first thing was like, you know, when somebody's looking at, at a file for, or Hanford, right? They're like, whoa, you know, and you're looking at a budget, it's like, well, what, what's the reason you, these people need so much money, right? So then, you know, like, I think like Chris mentioned, then there's the lawyers that come in, right? How do you kind of simplify that? And I think everybody kind of in sync and the same page, which I think we're trying to, like, you know, like Ruth mentioned, I think we're trying to move along is, how do we kind of, you know, I think looking at the, you know, at the outreach and like what Jan mentioned, how do we actually communicate that, especially try to get that flow kind of keep going? Because I think to me, I think that's the biggest thing to me that right away since, you know, I started becoming a, I became a member of HAB was that that was kind of like a stop, especially I think where it's stuff, it's in the cleaning process, right? They want to kind of move that along and all those issues.
Thank you. Tom, Galliotto.
Thanks, Ruth. The, the reduction in size of the documents that you were talking about earlier, you got down to 28 pages or so, so far, is a, is a laudable goal to reduce, reduce duplications and redundancies and maybe even some detail. But the caution I'd offer is, since I don't think this group is going to be dealing with those documents at all, right? Right now?
Not today.
And in fact, we probably won't have much of a review as a HAB on the final documents, will we?
You will. You have to. Tom, by the, by, according to the OGR, the Operating Guide Rules document, which is the document we are updating, the board has to approve that document to go to headquarters by two-thirds vote. So each and every one of you will receive that document for review. And we'll have the opportunity to provide comments and we will deal with the comments.
Okay.
But yes.
I guess my, my concern though is I, I hope that the goal is not just to reduce the volume of the documents, it's to, it's to document the details on how we think we should be operating. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
One thing about reducing the document, remember as Tom said, we put three documents together. So each of those individual documents was much smaller than 46 pages. But when we took three of them together, that added up to the 46 pages. So there's a lot of redundancy because some of the documents said exactly the same thing, albeit in different words.
Or different things, the same words.
Or different things in the same words. So a lot of the reduction has just been to eliminate redundancy that was there in, in the three documents.
Jan, you're smiling, Jan. This is good.
I'm smiling because we're talking about the length of the document and bringing it down to a kind of a size that a person can deal with. And when we're thinking about the person who's going to deal with it first, it's going to be the DFO. So having looked at some of the documents that have been approved from the other, the other sites, from the other committees, we understand that less is more and that we will have, we will produce, the HAB will eventually produce a more kind of operations manual, a kind of desk operations manual, a kind of desktop reference for some of these things that don't need to be in the the foundational document. The foundational document is kind of like Congress and regulations. Congress passes the law and then the agencies make the regulations on how to implement the law. So we are making the law right now and then subsequently we'll be making the desk reference of how to implement the law. And that'll, you know, that'll be more something that we will, as individual members, be more likely to read than the foundational document. What we want is a document that's short enough and concise enough that it won't attract the attention of the lawyers. Tom, Cecilia.
Yeah, that second document, which probably won't be done by this operations work group, working title is the best practices guide or something like that. Or Fred.
I call it Fred.
Yeah.
So you can think of it as there's the shall document, the requirements document, kind of like bylaws, if you've been in a nonprofit. And those actually don't tell you what to do day to day exactly. And then you have your desktop guide or you, this is how we send out meeting notices and this is how we elect committee leadership. And this is so. Actually, that's a stretch. Anyway. So there there's sort of layers and the and the the work group did early on some work on what are the hierarchy of documents that affect you as the HAB? Starting with the Federal Advisory Committee Act and all the way down through the DOE manual and the EMSSAB charter. And and how does that stuff flow together and how should it fit together? So so that's kind of what's behind making the documents fit together better. Pam.
We had a person on the HAB, Bob Siama, that was Mr. Process Manual. And over the years, I couldn't understand his fascination. But anyway, since we can engage previous HAB members, public, so forth, I really encourage you guys to reach out to Bob because he's been through every edit and, you know, has physical scars through the whole process. So he can help a lot in your conversations. Thank you.
So the purpose of today's meeting is actually not to deal with the document stuff because they haven't finished melding the stuff, the words together yet. They're they did a lot of work yesterday, but they're not quite there yet. The purpose of today's meeting is to start actually with a couple of the foundational documents and look at what are the committees or work groups you want for this coming fiscal year? Fiscal year 2024 actually starts on October 1st, 2023. I can't explain that. It just does. So what does this group want to recommend to the board, to the full board, for the committees you want to do your work next fiscal year? That's the prize today. Don't worry about the documents for today. You'll get to see them. Questions on what we're going to do today, what we're going to focus on today? Yeah, Mike?
So I just have one comment too, and I know it's on some folks' mind is getting back to the business of what the HAB does, right? Meeting, evaluating information, reviewing that information, providing actionable policy level advice. And so I just I just have one request, and that is that the majority of what we're trying to accomplish here in this time, not only today, but in the ops work group meeting that we've talked about considerably, is is taking the time to get your fundamental documents right, the document that you work to, just taking the time to slow down so that we can speed up. If if we get that done, the rest of it just falls into line. It's it's in our rearview mirror. But but it's important. And I and I know because I hear it often, it's like, hey, we want to, let's let's get back to business. Let's get back to business. This is a fundamental part of our business right now, today and in the immediate future. And I know we're still still having committee meetings and still making some sausage there, if I can say it that way, with all due respect. But the the plea here is is just work, take the time, slow down so that we can speed up. And I promise you it it will it will work out.
So as the starting point for this workshop, the group has met a number of times. We have posted all kinds of things on the conference room walls at Ecology. And there are a couple of things on the wall just to to start your work today. These are snapshots of a whole series of of pasting the walls with ideas and lists. And so I'd like to move to the next agenda item and have members of the group, work group themselves, tell you what's the stuff on the wall, what does it mean, and set you up for getting out of your chairs and actually playing with what are the groupings of work that makes sense, given the charter for the HAB and what you've been asked to give advice on? So who wants to start with the wall translation? If if he's going to speak to the wall, yeah. So Lacy's going to try to help with some of the visuals for those of you online. I'm just going to apologize now. It's going to be a little rough if you're dialed in because of the workshop nature. So I'm sorry about that difficulty.
Can you hear me okay on this? Yes. What we did first was take a look at requirements documents and what is the HAB supposed to do? We started with the EMSSAB charter and it says very specifically in there, the HAB will provide policy level advice and recommendation on these topics. And I'm not going to read the topics because everybody's going to have a chance to to leave their seats and come up and look at it. Then we looked at the memorandum of understanding. That's a document that's been signed off on by Department of Ecology, US EPA and DOE. And they have come to agreement on how is the HAB going to, how is the advisory board going to operate? And what is it supposed to do? And MOU says, we will provide policy level advice and recommendation on these topics. So it expanded upon the EMSSAB charter topics. Then members took a look at these. Oh, and in both of these documents, there's kind of a phrase at the end and it says, and other cleanup related activities. So it kind of left a a catchall phrase. So in the course of discussion, the green here is what members thought to add to what we could provide policy level advice and recommendations are that fall into these other catchall categories. And that's what the green is. Then with these as requirements, we took these and we said, how do we group them together? What are what seemed to be logical groupings of these scope requirements? And they fell into these five categories as best we could, as best we could group them. So there's one which and these these titles up here were are arbitrary. And they're not necessarily titles that are going to go through ultimately to the end. This is one of the things that this that this meeting can can discuss is what should the names of these groupings be? And are these the best groupings also based upon an expanded membership? So we have one which arbitrarily is requirements. And these are the things that actually are cross cutting in nature. Things like funding, cleanup, budget and funding, TPA content changes, regulatory milestones, duration of cleanup. There is a grouping that dealt with waste, waste management and disposition, nuclear materials management, waste storage, nuclear materials disposition, waste treatment, and so on. Then there were a series of requirements that dealt with communications and outreach. A broad series which dealt generally with cleanup and environmental restoration. And there were a number of things that dealt with long term stewardship and 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 future land use. So these are the groupings as we as as best we could take the requirements on the first wall and put them together. While it seems simple, this was basically two eight hour days worth of worth of people coming up and adding their adding their ideas on and a lot of switching back and forth. And it's not just members of the HAB, myself and Tom and Jan and and Sue, but the agencies were actively involved too, especially Ecology and and EPA. So this was a consensus, a consensus that we reached on on how best to group them. And I'm not really going to say anymore on this right now. But I think the next item on the agenda is is for the group to take a look at these and everybody go up and see. And then I think following that, however, however Ruth wants to do it, there's some opportunity for rearrangement. Is that right, Ruth?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is time now for for everybody in the room to 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 get to have their say on this and to talk among each other on these things and say, is is this the best way to do things? And with that, I'll shut up.
So the theory, we've got cards up. Steve and then Tom.
Yeah, just one quick question, Chris, before you go. Is the color legend, can you just go over the color legend again so that we have an idea what green means versus pink versus orange versus yellow?
Yellow, yellow was requirements in the EMSSAB charter. Those are, that's the charter that that comes down from 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 headquarters and said, advisory board shall shall give policy level advice and recommendation on these topics. So that's a thou shalt from from headquarters. The memorandum of understanding is is pink. And this is how DOE and Ecology and EPA have agreed on what on on the topics that we shall offer advice and and recommendations on. And as I said, there's a catchall on the bottom of those two that says, and other cleanup related activities. And that's where we tried to flesh those out in green. So the green is members of the operations work group, things that fell into that that other catchall, other cleanup activities. And they tend to be more budget and money related than than specifically cleanup related. So again, yellow is EMSSAB, pink is memorandum of understanding and green is us adding adding to that.
All right, I've got Tom and Ryan. Tom?
So when we're looking at these cards on the wall, there's, you'll see there's some duplication. There's also some things that are sort of implied in each of these. One of the things that isn't a card that probably should be is health and safety. We don't want to do anything on the side if we're not doing it safely for the workforce and the public and the environment. So that was one idea is also, you know, having a whether that's in the requirements, it is a requirement, or it's a standalone group is is health and safety. There's also, you know, people were talking about whether waste and nuclear materials management disposition has too much on their plate with what's on there. It's only eight cards, but there's a lot of information covered on those eight cards. So maybe something like waste disposal could get put into future land use. Because if you're disposing something on site, that's affecting future land use. So that's the type of balancing that we would like to see in the workshop as well. Really figuring out how are we going to make it so we don't have one committee that has to meet every month in order to get the briefs to get the work done.
All right. Sue, I see your hand too. You did an analysis early on of, because because when you look, you say, okay, there there are ten yellows and there are thirty three pinks. And that looks like they're a whole lot more pink than yellow, right? Didn't you do early on an analysis of like, how do they match up? Like, are they lumping or splitting?
Actually, well, I did. What I I'm a process person. And one of the questions that was coming up early on was that they're not consistent, that we're not in compliance. So what I did is I built a spreadsheet and compared the scope of work from each of the documents, the MCEB charter and the TPA. And there's a handful that we have in the TPA charter that is not in the EMSSAB charter. There is, I mean, it's like tribal interaction is in the TPA, but or in the EM. That's right, the TPA MOU, but it's not going to be in the EMSSAB type of thing. But overall, it looks more because in the EMSSAB charter, they use high level descriptions, environmental management. The TPA went a lot more detailed, which is why it looks like a lot more sheets. They spilled out stuff in detail.
And there's a yellow one called cleanup. Well, cleanup covers a lot of things and the MOU expanded upon cleanup too. So it's, they're not incompatible. It's just that this is an expansion of more general things in the EMSSAB charter.
So Jeff and then Tom, and then I'm going to check the queue. Jeff?
Thank you. So I I think this is great. It's it's good once in a while. Look under the covers and see what's going on. So I I like the process. My question is, of these five groupings, group number two and number four look like they have a lot in common. So if someone could explain that maybe in the context of tank waste, because tank waste could fall in both of those groups. So what's the the logic there?
I can take a stab. So waste and nuclear materials management and disposition is more of the ORP side of the house, regulated more by Ecology. And then cleanup activities, environmental restoration is more the RL side of the house, regulated by EPA as a broad brush. I mean, there's going to be little sections in each that have some crossover. In effect, waste and nuclear materials management position is an analog of the tank waste committee. And cleanup activities is more an analog of the river and plateau if we wanted to try to group it. But we really tried to ignore the fact that we have committees now and figure out if there's an intuitive way to group things without having that preconceived notion that these are the committees.
All right. I have to stand here so I can get the cards. So I've got Tom, Rob, Richard and Michelle. Tom?
Thanks, Ruth. Asking a point of clarification and also another question. For clarification, it's a one to one comparison between the cards on the left side of the door there and all of these other cards. Is that right?
They're actually duplicates.
They're duplicates, okay.
They're duplicates of each other.
And the second, the question is, when you went through the requirements and all we're dealing with here are the requirements that you've identified from those leading documents, is that right? Have you ever, have you come across in your discussions the the current or additional work scope that the HAB has now and should continue or not continue? But have you considered things beyond what you saw in those requirement cards?
That's the green. It's stuff that we think that are all is also appropriate for the HAB to talk about, but is not in the foundational, either headquarters or TPA documents.
Okay, I guess I was thinking more in detail. So you really kept those green at high levels, though, right?
The the goal is to be high level so we have a broad scope that doesn't anger lawyers.
Sometimes it's fun to anger the lawyer.
Rob and then Richard.
Excuse me. Some of the things that I have I noticing here is that how are we handling the it seems like we're missing things that we're doing now. For example, all of our tank waste activity involving the integrity of the single For example, all of our tank waste activity involving the integrity of the single and double shell tanks, it doesn't appear on there. Okay? If, if you want to include it under that management idea, but let's be specific. That's the, one of the things that when we had the past names, they're very specific. They're not having to draw out a definition of somebody, what does that mean? Rather, tank waste committee, river plateau committee, you know, had a very simple definition. So anyway, my only point is that if, if you're including those other things that we're doing now, then let's put cards up because, you know, we're terribly interested in integrity of the structures out there. And, and, and do we have anything which would cover K-basin? Okay? And those activities, those are terribly important now. And, and other things, you know, that we have, you know. Anyway, I just think that, that we're playing the same game that we're trying to avoid. We're trying to be more specific and add definition and add more life to what we're doing, but we're using all these terms that are less definitive than if we just, you know, organically grow a subject, you know, and, and say, this is important right now for us. Just a thought. Do you think it's, that's where it's supposed to be in that management end of it? Because the integrity of the infrastructure out there is very important.
Yeah, I think waste storage is probably where that would be covered, but wanted to, so these are the high-level things. The goal later in the day is to appropriately name these groups, as Chris calls them, and find out what the exact, what the actual scope is of these groups, based on what we have on the work plan and say, okay, 324, where does that fit? And tank integrity, where does that fit? And, and how do we really have a really well-defined scope moving forward that we can propose to the board in April? Right now, for instance, there is no document that describes a committee that's supposed to handle tank closure. Because when these committees were formed, that wasn't on the radar. We, we, it wasn't time for tank closure yet, so it was left off. Is that a cleanup or is that long-term stewardship or is that tank waste? So we're trying to stay broad and it'll be nimble under the work plan development. That makes sense.
All right. I saw Chris and Mike, you came up. Do you want to speak to this issue, the two of you? Chris first? Yeah, I have Richard and Michelle. I wanted to make sure they, they commented on, on Rob's thing.
Right, Rob, you commented about you don't see, you don't see things dealing with the tank integrity. Well, the same thing holds for the central plateau and the river. There's nothing on there specifically about 324, about 61811, about the deep Vado zone, about the specific D and D of all the major canyons on site. That level of detail just isn't there. One way to look at this, very, very generally, ignoring the requirements side there, but if you look at the other, other four topics in orange, you could consider those as a PBS. You know, PBS 060 for the tank farms, RL 30 for the central plateau. And those would be the top level PBS or, or, or the PBS is, is the breakdown that receives funding from, from, from Congress. The yellow and pink and blue below it could be considered the level, the level-two scope of a PBS. And what we don't have are the three, four, five, six levels down there. So it's, you could look at that in a funding sense if you like, is that you have the upper level funding and that works its way down to the lowest level of, of, of a task or work scope. And that's something that I think, as Tom said, it can be fleshed out in work plans, can be fleshed out by the committee chairs going forward, be fleshed out by IM teams, but by leaving at an upper level, I think it builds in flexibility going, going forward, rather than trying to get down to the, to the nitty-gritty of all the different work tasks and work elements that we could think of and, and try and pile them under and group It's a performance baseline system. That's basically how work is organized and funded in, in, in DOE terminology, but it's like an org chart for work.
So Mike, and then I've got four people in queue, and I actually want to get you out of your seats. Mike?
Just making sure, Michelle, you're still up, are you? Did you have any hat on? Yeah, so I'm trying not to talk a lot today. I want you to know that, that. So Rob, one of the things that, that I want to make, make you aware of and then share with the group as a whole is that, that, that you, there is a perspective that the, the committees that were created, that their scope is clear, that they, the scope was adequate. I, I came in with a new guy perspective almost a year ago now, and one of the things that I found immediately is that the committees were described in at least three different places and used different terminology to describe them. And that was the first time I raised my hand and I said, what do the committees do? What, what is within the scope? What is within the, the bucket? I'm going to refer to the orange ones as buckets. Orange Home Depot buckets, if you will, not advocating support for Home Depot, but, but, but it wasn't clear to me what was in those buckets. And so when I went to the information and looked to see how they were defined, they were different. And so that was really where this started, is to say, hey, what, what should be under these? Can we have common definitions? Quite frankly, that's where this, this part of this whole opportunity started was, was alignment on, on what those terms were. I initially thought it was going to be something as simple as you'd, the, the HAB would come together, they'd look at the definitions, adjust the definitions, but what came out of that was, was what you see today. I, I looked at it initially when participating in, in the work group as the buckets would be the buckets that, that I speak to when I kick off every HAB committee meeting and HAB meeting. Gary, thank you for doing that today. I was helping some nuns across the street and they were taking their time, so it was a little late. So, but those buckets are cleanup activities and environmental restoration, waste and nuclear materials management disposition, excess facilities, future land use and long-term stewardship, risk management and communications and outreach. I'll confess that I added the outreach because I think outreach expands upon that, that, that's something that I added. So if you want to toss it, it won't hurt me, but I think it's more reflective of what we're doing. And, and so I know those resonate, are going to resonate with the chain of command going up because it's in their documents, right? And Tom and Chris, to a certain extent, have talked about the simplicity, right? The less is more approach. Rob, you had mentioned that the importance for, for delineating what's in those buckets. I think that you can get there, friends. If, if what you communicate in the information is you're going to have these buckets and those buckets resonate with the information that's in the higher-tier documents, it's a home run. If, if what you do is you, in your process document, I'm sorry, your guidance document, lessons learned document, whatever we call the Fred, all y'all call it Fred, is that, that you want to provide that level of, of granularity or detail for your own benefit, that's perfectly fine. And then I know Gary has some thoughts too, that have emerged recently about, about the buckets. But that's, that's where it started. And, and overall, the objective of course, is to establish a committee structure. I've heard terms like reorganize, and I don't, that's not a term that resonates with me. Alignment is the term that, that resonates with me quite frankly, frankly, to reflect current and future site operations. I'll say it again because it's important. Current and future site operations. And, and I know everybody here's got a vision and what they'd like the Hanford site to look like and awareness of where we're going, I think it's important to, to keep that in mind. Thanks for your time.
I've got six people in queue, and I'll tell you where I'm headed. What I want to do at some point is get you out of your seats and get you to the back wall so that you can actually read the cards up close and personal, because if you're standing right back here, it's a little hard to read. And see, is the stuff in the right orange bucket? Those orange titles are just working titles, right? They're not concrete. There's no concrete in those buckets. But to really look at, well, does this thing belong here or does this thing belong there? So that the committees fit how you want to organize yourself to do your work. So Richard, thank you for waiting. You're up. And Michelle, I still have your card up. I'm checking in with you next.
Well, I've, I've, one of the long-term HAB members. And, you know, my, my favorite statement is, an organization is a mistake in time. But a good way to look at organizations is previous activities. And, you know, I, I look at, you, you, you say, well, this is not, you know, waste management, materials management disposition. Well, that's, that's sort of like tank farms. That's mostly tank activities, but actually that's very little of what's going out there in waste management. You have the cesium capsules being moved. You have the, the, the central waste complex. I mean, I think of the issues of bulging drums and, and things that just have no home that are parked out there for years and years. You have where the, you're going to cite a, a new, the, the new landfill going in for the vitrified waste. You know, the, is that over there? I mean, the issues we had in the past of macro encapsulation going, whether it had to be done in midair on the edge of the, of the Erdaf or whether it could actually be done rationally in Erdaf itself. So, so there are a lot of waste management issues that have come up over the years that aren't tank waste. And, you know, I guess I will fault previous HAB issues of, oh, well, should, you know, the tank waste committee spent a tremendous amount of time looking at the process at, at bit plant. Well, I don't think that's our job as, as the community. We have to know if it's going on, but the details of, of the mix of the glass and, I mean, how many presentations we've had on that, that, that's been, you know, you know, really a, you know, why do we know? Why do we care? I mean, you know, what is our, what, what is, what, what is it that the HAB's trying to produce? You know, we're trying to give effective advice. You know, we, 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 I think there was a study done that of 95% of the advice the HAB over the past, you know, 40 years, is that right? 25 years, whatever, has been ignored. You know, we've not, we, you know, and, and I've brought this up many times in the past that we have to look at, what is it? What is it, what is our job? What is our, our, just to complain? To be informed? You know, what, which is it? Now, if you look at these buckets, think of it in that terms of, we want to, quote, assist the tri-parties. I, I think, you know, in my mind, we assist the tri-parties at going the right direction. I like the future land use aspects, but I would say waste disposal goes over there because where is it going to go? I, I somewhat think that, that cleanup activities and the waste management activities probably could have a couple of sub-buckets type of approach where it gets folks. Environmental Safety and Health Subcommittee, in the past, you know, the big, the big advice that we've pushed were brilium exposure for the workers, the cesium capsules because of the nuclear risk of it. You know, these were things that, and releases. You know, a lot of things that HAB will be interested in or should have a, a say in and should be understanding is when things go wrong. Vapors, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, you know, these were big issues. They're still ongoing issues. I don't, you know, and, and they cross, a lot of them cross-cut this, you know, ORP vice, you know, central plateau type of approach. So keep that in mind as we go through it. I don't know the right mix. I'm just, you know, that's, that's my views. It's, it's, you think about what it is where we should comment on.
All right. So I've got a long, a list that's getting longer. Gary, you had your hand up and I missed you. So I'm going to go back to you and then go back to my list.
Sure. And, and I appreciate that. And if I jumped over somebody, I apologize. I'm not running the queue. She is sublime.
You owe Michelle the beverage of her choice.
Well, to kind of dovetail on something that Mike said a couple of minutes ago. And, and, and I've heard in some of the conversations, some confusion about what's in a particular bucket or not in a particular bucket. One thing to consider is that the thinner you want to slice things, the harder they will be to manage. For instance, if you go to the deli at the grocery store and you ask them to slice some ham, it's going to come out at a pretty nice slice. But if they use the very same slice on a piece of turkey, that turkey's going to crumble. What does that mean? I don't know. I've got a ham and turkey sandwich for lunch. But one of the things that, if you notice Brian Vance's presentations lately, he pretty much has the site in three general categories. Tank waste and everything that has to do with tank waste. Risk reduction, which is primarily 100K, 324 building, things like that to get further away from the Columbia River. And then infrastructure. And if you take a look at most of those buckets, most of those cards up there, they could probably fit in those three categories because many of those things are cross-cutting and they might hit one or two of these buckets there. And, and I've heard a couple of people mention differences between Richland Operations Office scope and Office of River Protection scope. They're still trying to do the same thing. It's clean up the site. So what office is doing it is kind of immaterial. It's the effect that you're looking for. So while the agencies don't want to influence the product, the thinner you slice things, the harder it will be to support. And if you align more with Mr. Vance's vision of those three major buckets, virtually everything will fit in that. Everything up there is important. Everything. But not everything is today important. Some of these things won't be important for another 20 years. Some of them are very important today. So try to consider that. And then I also heard a, a couple of folks use the word nimble. And those are some things you should also consider is, take a look at the process as we're going along and whatever the board comes up with for groups, buckets, committees, however you want to term that. And if a year or so from now, it doesn't seem to be working right or fitting right, change it. You're not creating something in concrete. You're creating something, trying to be nimble, to try to prepare for operations going into tomorrow. And what is the site going to look like 20 years from now? That's my two cents.
Michelle, is your card really down or are you still noodling?
My card's really down. My question is actually, it relates to the next area.
Okay, okay. I've got Jacob and I've got Dan Solitz online, then Pam and Tom Cecilia. Jacob?
All right. So I put my card up when Rob was talking. And it, I'll tell you, I went and looked at the cards beforehand and I'm ready to vote to agree to all of this right now. You know, it looks great. Whoever put it together, good job. You know, the, the more the, the def- You know, the the more the the definition of the the orange thing, the green, the where I want to comment is on the green and the orange. So if you go to the the our the HAB charter, which is basically the yellow, it it doesn't actually say those yellow things are the scope. It actually says anything the Hanford Advisory Board wants to comment on related to Hanford it can. And then it puts a period right there. And then the next sentence is, here is some examples. So you just kind of know what everything, you know, could be. And that's what it literally says. So and so there's these green are are the committee who put this together. Their idea of the the things that are not in yellow and aren't in pink. And I love the things that are in yellow and pink and the things that are in green. But if you look at some things like vapors or beryllium, there are other topics that may not quite fit in each of these categories, but will fit in all of these orange. So as long as we're the 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 committees in orange are allowed to add a green someday, I'm in agreement with all of this. But I do think that that's important, that we we shouldn't be limited to the greens that we came up today because we don't know what's going to come up in year 2028 as things evolve, right? And we can only imagine today. But I love this organization personally. You know, I'd probably quibble with a little the words of the orange titles, but I probably won't because they're really frankly good enough and good job. Thanks.
So let me clarify, given that I am guilty of creating the cards. The yellows, those are the direct words out of the National EMSSAB Charter. The pink are the words, although a couple of them are are paraphrased, out of the list, it's like a page and a smidge list, out of the HAB TPA MOU. So the the HAB Charter used to be the HAB Charter and Operating Ground Rules. And there was a mission statement at the top of it. It's it's on the website still. It's a paragraph says mission. So so none of these are out of what the HAB Charter is. It's the National EMSSAB and the TPA MOU. That's where those things came from. Just to be to be clear about where we acquired the words.
I like the HAB Charter better.
Yeah. And and before the EMSSAB Charter, the HAB had its own charter because it was the only one before it got adopted into the the EMSSAB. All right. I've got four people and I still want you to go up to the wall. Dan, you're online. What's your question?
Well, just much a question as a comment. I I think if you're looking for broad categories, there's contamination and then there's waste. And if the waste sticks around long enough, it doesn't meet the waste acceptance criteria of the state, then it goes back to contamination. So if you deal with 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 it in terms of what's what has has hasn't been characterized or needs to be characterized and then and then contain. And if it can be disposed, then you've got waste, you move it to contamination. If if, I mean, you've got contamination and you move it to waste. But if a tank leaks, then you're back to contamination. So if you cut it into those those two categories and look at it in terms of site characterization, acceptance and acceptance, then it's pretty clear how you got to deal with this material wherever it's at. Thank you.
Right. Pam, thank you for waiting.
Thank you. Um, I I I like Gary's concept of slicing too thin. Future land use and long-term stewardship is slicing too thin. That was resolved years ago. And so somebody new to the HAB is going to think, wow, this is going to be great. I'm going to be able to engage in what's going to happen in the future. It it's done. And and so what I think we need to do is look at the current structure and redefine what goes in each place. Tank waste includes the waste. It includes waste treatment. And and the committee can continue on with the expertise that it has. Future land use belongs to River Plateau Committee because that's the river, the land that is transferred or is ready to transfer to long-term stewardship. What's not there is health and safety. I don't understand why it's not there as a separate committee. Brian or, yeah, Brian Vance's mention of infrastructure. That's central plateau. We're not putting infrastructure in the river corridor. The river corridor is almost done. So I would encourage you, as you look at this, to look at it in the context of a tank waste committee, a river and plateau committee, which is mostly plateau because the river is almost done, health and safety and communications. And part also keep in mind that we have people with different passions, different aptitudes. And and this committee structure that we've had gives those people the opportunity to pursue what they're interested in. Richard's an excellent example in terms of health and safety. He's been amazing with the beryllium issue because he has the background. He understands it. And so I I don't think we need to restructure. We we can better define what our committees are already doing and and not provide expectations of significant policy development where there isn't that opportunity. Thank you.
Tom and then Richard. And then I'm going to explain the next two activities and hopefully that will start tying things together for you.
So so my first comment was, when you go up to the wall, also be thinking about what the agencies are allowed to brief on. Looking under the requirements document, a lot of those well-intended yellow, pink and green dots are embargoed information. And we don't, no matter how much we want a briefing on it and we want to talk about funding and spending, we're not allowed to or the agencies aren't allowed to, which is has caused some frustration and could be one of the reasons why the optimization is a is a good idea. Related to future land use, the decisions have not been made in the TPA space. The there, there's the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is not a primary TPA document for cleanup. Every time there's a record of decision, the cleanup standards are set based on a land use for that operable unit, is my understanding. And correct me if I'm wrong. But that that space needs to be held for the HAB to speak. If we throw all of that into one committee that's also supposed to be handling cleanup and infrastructure, then you're going to have one committee that meets every month to handle all the topics under it. And then that's that's going to be the board. We need to spread out the the work.
Tom, I need to respond to you. The records of decision are done for the river quarter. The records of decision define future use. Those decisions have been made based on what cleanup has been done. So.
Right. So 100K and N are still not a rod. I don't want to get into it, but just the, there's land use. There's a lot of record decisions that have not been finalized yet.
Right. Richard, last comment, and then you really are going to get up and go to the wall.
Well, I I'm going to somewhat agree that we we don't need that, the the future land use title. It needs to be the infrastructure. But infrastructure needs to be rethought. Infrastructure is waste management. If you can't move waste around, you can't store waste, you can't do, you know, you can't ship waste, that's infrastructure. Now, waste management in tanks, it's a different issue. That's that's just passive, right? And so I I do, you know, I think title-wise and thought-wise, if this became tanks, tank waste, which includes vitrification and storage and movement, that would be a scope small enough. But infrastructure is where do you bury it? How do you bury it? How do you store it? You know, that type of stuff. That can go over into whatever you want to call that last group. And then, you know, the the middle one, cleanup activities, is risk reduction. It keeps the the groups in, we're really creating a new group. I think health and safety will span all those kind of things, but it can be a separate subcommittee that meets whenever, you know, whenever it needs to to span both those areas as far as something unique. But I, you know, I don't think we need to focus on long-term stewardship, but that committee should understand the whole breadth of what's out there in infrastructure to support day-to-day work. Because if that work shuts down, everything shuts down. You know, and so that's that's my two bits. And I'm thinking that in terms of shuffling things around, but just ignore that title over there when you, I don't think it's appropriate.
So again, the orange bucket titles are just placeholders for the groups. They they can totally be renamed. Let me give you sort of a peek of the next three activities so you you'll see where we're going. Esteban, did you have your card up? Did I miss you?
No, I'll just get a follow-up like what Richard just mentioned. And I think that's for me, that's where I'm for me, I'm making the, you know, and especially because the big thing right now, I think, being in Houston, the big thing that right away, like the public, you know, with the incident that happened in Ohio, they were going to burn, they're going to bring that water, that contaminated water and bury it in, you know, in Houston. So the big thing, like I think like Richard mentioned, is that that is part of infrastructure because currently there was a bill called, you know, that was focused on infrastructure spending. And the me coming, you know, before I came here, I was in DC. The big thing is that, you know, for these policy walks, and I think like, when I hear policy right away, for me, the queue, that's that's lawyer talk, right? Lawyer has got to look at the paperwork. So if you don't want to do that, and I think that's the biggest because yesterday I was having a conversation with somebody that people sometimes at the local level and the big disconnect is that people don't want to deal with federal stuff because it's too overwhelming. There's already enough work to do. And I think with this, when it comes to nuclear waste, I think like Richard just mentioned, I mean, it's a big, and I think like Rob, and that's a big thing, that trying to simplify it, it's not that simple. Because trying to explain it to somebody, especially just your, you know, your average Joe or wherever, it's practically impossible.
All right. So let me explain like the next three steps so it'll, I'm praying it'll make a little more sense. The first one is getting up and and looking at these things. And if you if you think this card should go over here, then move it with one huge caution. They just repainted the walls. This is blue tape. This is good. Don't yank stuff off the wall. Do it very gently, okay? Because we want to be able to use this room again. But come up and read it. And so if you think something belongs somewhere else, it's okay to move it. If you think there's there's a missing something, you could create another grouping. If you think a grouping needs to be adopted by another one, we can do that, too. So the first cut is, are these mostly in the right place? The second thing is to look at, this says requirements. This is really cross-cutting stuff. So the agenda item after break was, how do you want to deal with crosscutters? Right? Do you want a standalone committee for a crosscutter? Or do you want to weave it in? Or do you want to do some version of the circle that you saw in committee meetings, that resource team circle? That was the evolution of this place. And so we've, I've taken it a step backwards because the resource team circle triggered a lot of questions. Right? So how do you want to do crosscutters? That's the next thing we're going to do. And at lunch, it's a combination lunch, small group work concept. Well, you'll get to pick one of the buckets, whichever bucket you want to work on. And at lunch, not only do you get to eat with people that I'd love for you to know better, like each other, but you get to come up with a name and you get to come up with a description of what your bucket does. What is that scope? So that when we come back, one, you've wordsmithed in smaller groups. And two, you've got some proposals. We want a committee called Fred, and Fred is going to do these three things. And I had lunch with some really cool people, too. So that's, it's it's meant to be in small chunks. The first chunk, are these mostly in the right place? Knowing you can change the name. And then we'll deal with crosscutters if they're if they're still here. You could decide to farm out crosscutters across them. And then over lunch, you're going to give them names. Does that make sense? Michelle.
My only hesitance in in that is, for example, there were the several people that.
Michelle, will you tap into the link?
Oh, sorry.
So my only, my only concern and is that there were several people that mentioned, for example, risk reduction or risk management as a as a category that you could call it cross-cutting. Or there are, the other way to look at it is that if that was a bucket, there are items under all of these categories that could be completely taken out and put into a, as yet not existing bucket of, you know, risk. But because we don't have a a defined spot for what that other bucket might be, I I I'm just fearful that we're going to have a lot of pieces of paper migrating between buckets and we're never going to get to the point that they're just going to stop moving from bucket to bucket.
I have blank orange sheets. And we can, we can create two as-yet-named things so that if if what you want is a thing that goes together differently, you can do that. So this isn't meant to constrain you to, these are the four things. These are the four things the Operations Work Group came up with. If the group says, no, 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 they really should be reordered like this, that's exactly why you're here. To make it fit the group and what the work is you're going to do in the next fiscal year. Rob and then Richard.
Some of these need better definition. For example, waste storage, is that nuclear waste storage or non-nuclear waste storage? Is it nuclear waste management disposition? How is that different than the nuclear waste management disposition? Both. I mean, let's, let's think about this. I I think Gary kind of had it straight on is aligning as to what the divisions of DOE can support. Because we can't consider things that that if if DOE is unwilling to support us on an advice area where somebody feels strongly, it won't get done, right? I mean, I mean, we've had that happen before is we respond to the needs with the project itself. I I guess I'm confusing, but we've had people interested in offering device and DOE saying, it's not going to go anywhere. Now, is that the same way? We can do that now?
So I'm I'm going to invite you to actually do that at lunch.
Okay. I I mean, I have no problem with that. But I just, like I said, the definitions on these are pretty kind of weak.
Well, the the rationale, gosh, I don't want to sound defensive. The rationale, because one of the watchwords of the Operations Work Group was alignment. If you've listened to them talk about how to make things fit together and align. And so the reason, and and they did look at me kind of funny the first day when I said, well, we'll go back to the documents and we'll just work with the topics. And quite frankly, I had no idea what potential committee groupings were going to come out. I really didn't know. But but we had to, we had to start somewhere. And because alignment and the documents were one of the big things that was driving the work group, that's why we, that's why we started there. And so that that's, that's where the flow comes so that things can be better in alignment. And hopefully you get better support and then the advice is better focused on what they've asked you to do. That's the logic. So the idea for lunch is to take the high-level stuff, give it a name and describe that scope so that it's clear to you and it's clear to the agencies. And then you can do your work. So if we can wait just an hour, we're almost there.
So we're going to be allowed to redefine?
You're it's clarifying so that when Mike said, he he showed up as the new guy and he read, oh, this is what the committees do in one document. And then he went to another document. document and said, this is what the committees do, but those words don't match those words, and he was confused. So the idea is naming the committees and having one set of words, so it's very clear to all of you, or anybody else, this is what this committee does. That's the lunch homework, is naming and clarity. Chris?
Yeah, Rob, just remember, too, if you don't like the definitions in the yellow and, and pink, remember, those are what's in the driver documents, E M S S A B and the, and the memorandum of understanding, the T P A. Those are word-for-word in yellow, and almost word-for-word in the pink. That's what there is. And so I think there's opportunity to, to add green, more green, to, to clarify things. That, that would be my suggestion.
And I would also add, waste disposal, for instance, is a good example of a pink that could go into multiple committees. You can have waste disposal of vitrified waste, you could have waste disposal of secondary waste, you can have waste disposal of buildings that are being demoed, you have waste disposal of remediated soil, you have waste disposal of ion exchange columns from groundwater pumping tree. All of that's waste disposal. Right now, because there's only one copy of each card, it'll, it's all under one thing, but it's actually not one thing.
We have markers, and we have more cards. The scarcity is, is intended to, to push you to make a decision, but if you hit something, you go, excess facilities lives in more than one of these, we'll just make a second card. Mike, did you have?
Yeah, it's just kind of a say, oh, she's gone. Is Pam gone? Where'd she go? Well, kind of a segue to Pam's comment was, we, we know environmental health and safety is paramount to everything we do onsite, right? It, so, so that's where you began to see the emergence of, of two, two things. Let me back up a little bit. The, the activity created two things. One is scaling back on the number of committees intentionally, because the number of committees equals the amount of effort. The HAB recently has struggled to staff committees. That, that, that's problematic. For each committee you have, there's a, a burn rate that's associated with that, right? Somebody's gotta have meetings, you've gotta develop those agendas, et cetera, et cetera. So, so there was some thought into efficiency, I just wanna say that, to be completely transparent. But, but during the work groups' activities, the, the emergence of cross-cutting came, became evident, first and foremost with budget and funding. Cross-cutting to everything. And the, the team had, had a very few items that initially were cross-cutting, and then Tom went back and did some great work, and then came back, and then there, there was a larger list, and I don't recall how the list had, had morphed, but, but they were, they were initially germane to, to funding and germane to health and safety, because they were applicable to all. And so you'd have some folks that were genuinely interested in those topical areas. And I'll, I'll pick on Chris, because Chris has got a passion for the funding, right, to make sure that, that our priorities are clearly identified. And, and, and he was one of the first to, to say, okay, look, I grasp this concept of that, that I could participate in each of these committees, and not only carry on, carry forward my passion, but also potentially mentor, I'm gonna use that word, mentor others, right? Because at some point in time, I think Chris is probably gonna wanna do other things in the future, I don't know what, but we wanna be able to capture some of that policies here. But it is appropriate to teach those committees, in the same way that health and safety was. And so Pam's back. So her, her comment at the, the HAB meeting was appropriate, then we had this really large list of other floaters that, that I think added a level of complexity, because people viewed that that was more work. The objective is, is to have those be the critical few. So I, I just have a request, that as you, as you begin to reorder things, remember that each orange area is each bucket, if you will, potentially, if, if you're following the rhythm here, could result in a committee, and think about the amount of effort that that's gonna take for the HAB to manage and sustain. Okay? But if you're using it to identify clarity, like, no, there's a much better title for this than what's up there, that, I, I think that's value-added.
Yeah. Working titles will be changed. Tom, and then I have a proposal for the group.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, if, if we end up with something that matches the committee structure we have now, with some clarification and modification, that's a beneficial outcome. You know, if, if we, if we can say, well, you know, the, the structure we have makes sense, and we just need to define it better, that, that works, but if we try to do that, we'll fail. If we try to say, what makes sense, and come at it from that angle, and then we end up in that same spot, that's, that's a different, different path, and it's more, we, we have ownership of those committees now. We being the board around the table and, and on the, on the internet. That's all.
All right. So remember, I'm really, really worried about the paint on the walls, so if you move stuff, do it gently. Pam asked that, that there be a health and safety bucket, so there's one at the end. There are blank ones. Michelle, if, if there's a Fred that we want, we can do that. So, don't sit down. My proposal is that we combine a break and, and noodling about the wall, and take, between now and 11:00 a.m., take a break, get some water, and come up and, and look at the wall and think about, how would you organize the board and its committees to do its work, given what advice and recommendations DOE and the tri-party agencies have asked you to give recommendations and advice on?
What if it was a different place where they wanna put them?
That's why we have markers and extra stickers. So if you, if you decide that excess facilities needs to live in two places, make two cards. It's meant to, to sort of push you to put it somewhere, but man, if it lives in two places, it lives in two places. Questions on what you're gonna do now and over break? Anyone? Oh, they need a break. Go. We'll see you at 11:00. Who wants to take the first stab at talking about the evolution of, of the names and how some of the cards got moved around? Anyone? You like talking? Find a microphone so the folks online can hear ya. Let's make sure the folks online, we've got a, a traveling mic, so, as opposed to our D D F O mic, who is here with us and not traveling.
So, at, at the risk, at the risk of talking too much, it looks like a lot of what happened was clarification and, and sort of honing in on what the words on the page actually mean. So in the bucket that was formerly waste and nuclear materials and management disposition, there's been a lot of clarity added, so it, it's specific to the tank mission. Health and safety got added back onto the page, and, and maybe even a risk reduction aspect of the health and safety mission. The infrastructure idea that Richard threw out got added over on the FAR bucket, and I came up with a fun acronym, Future Land Use Infrastructure and Disposal, which is And then we added some duplicates, because worker protection belongs everywhere. Waste disposal belongs in a couple buckets, and waste storage belongs in a couple buckets. When we did the sc- when we do the scoping over lunch, that will be where we have to really clarify what that means in this bucket. What am I missing? Who wants, wants to talk? Dan?
Get him a mic. Yeah.
There we go. Thanks. Oh, I'm gonna repeat something that, that I've said before at Hanford Advisory Board. I, I really don't like using the word risk without telling me what kind of risk it is. Is it the risk of losing your immortal soul? Is it the risk of the stock market? Is it the risk of making a bet on a horse? Is it the risk of health effects to people? Or is it the risk to bugs and bunnies? Does the risk that we're working on occur now, or does it occur in the future? So saying risk reduction is about the most meaningless thing you can say in this context. So I wanna know exactly what kind of risk it is, because there's a bunch of those that I don't think Hanford should be dealing with.
Chris, can you, can you use a mic, please?
I think that's a really good comment, and one that, one that really we can flesh out over lunchtime, but I think that's a good comment, because there are very different kinds of risk.
May I respond? We wrote a report in 1995 that does that in detail for, at Pacific Northwest National Lab. It was under the Integrated Risk Assessment Project, and it just died.
All right. Michelle, and then I'm gonna check with folks on the phone if they wanna jump in and ask questions or make a comment. Michelle?
I'll add clarification for the risk reduction under health and safety. Originally, when I was thinking about risk reduction and the idea of what are the elements that relate to identification of risks, and how could they be reduced, we then moved that over under health and safety, and moved over a couple of the items that were really specific to more either individual person or community-level concerns. So like, for example, I moved over the pink card about regional, local, public health and safety, and workforce impacts as, as the closed-down activities progress, because that's an economic risk to the, to the region, not necessarily an environmental risk related to tanks or operations. And then worker protection was in there under health and safety, and there's one card that says, you know, risk assessment, but specifically related to workers and community, as opposed to environmental or other things. So just clarification for what ended up over there.
All right. Do we have folks on the phone who have a question or a comment, wanna jump in? Anyone? It's a tough meeting for them. Chris, did you get back up?
And there's one other kind of risk, too, that hasn't been expressly, hasn't been expressed here, and that's project management risk. And that's the risk that your project is not gonna be completed anywhere near schedule, anywhere near cost, and that the technologies aren't gonna work. So that's a, that's a major risk consideration, too.
So, let me make sure I'm interpreting what you've done accurately. I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five, six buckets. Is that correct? And that's not counting the leadership bucket, that's an administrative group that helps you out. The piece of the agenda that I thought we would need at this point, and you're gonna tell me if you need it or not, is what to do with cross-cutting kinds of issues. When the work group did their first sort on all of these 50 things, they came up with this, this cross-cutting piece. And, and part of the original impetus here had to do with funding and spending priorities. And then there were other things added that are also crosscutters. One of the proposals up here is actually a cross-cutting committee. Help me understand, is the cross-cutting committee different or in addition to the health and safety committee? Okay, meant to be additional. Okay. Yeah, Pam, and then Michelle.
We have had issues for the duration of the HAB that crossed between committees. In the early days, we would ask spokespeople, subject matter experts, to give two presentations, and that went away with doing a, a dual-topic meeting, so you would have two committees getting the same briefing. And I don't see any problem with going forward with that. We just have to make sure, in terms of committee work scope, that it's understood where there's a, a dual-committee interest.
Michelle?
The question I didn't ask before had to do with the, with the cross-cutting and that requirements group, and, and in my naivety as the new person, my initial thought was, well, wouldn't that be the kind of thing that you would talk to, speak to at a committee of the whole, where everyone was there to hear the information? But I think that, that's kinda similar to, but what Pam was suggesting about, you know, two committees.
Other observations on the wall and, and the clarifications, the, the evolving names? That's just setting you up well for lunch? I, I didn't know what the group was gonna do. Okay, I've got Rob and Richard. They both got hands. Rob? Oh, did I, excuse me, Rob. Dan, did I, are you still up? Oh, there's, oh, Tom, that's your card. I'm, I'm at the wrong angle. Okay, Rob, and then Richard.
Oh, I don't, did I miss? I was gonna...
Oh, go. Okay. Oh, yes, go.
My only comment was, since we were talking about the, the requirements, i.e. cross-cutting theme grouping, I added the, the lower blue one on infrastructure. We were talking about infrastructure, and, and Richard was talking about a different infrastructure that I was, than I was thinking of. I'm thinking of roads, water, sewage, and electrical power, and that's cross-cutting. So it doesn't belong to any specific committee.
Okay.
So I thought it should, either, that's why that infrastructure section is there.
Thank you. Okay. Got Rob, Richard, and Sue.
I was just gonna make a comment that I, I think the requirements section, this old cross-cutting thing, should just be handled with the main board. Do it at our main board meeting, main two-day board meeting, because many of those items are embargoed, and all we're really gonna get from DOE is presentations on the budget and what they can talk about and what they can't. Some of these other things about the T P A changes, they're not gonna be that often. And so maybe that whole section there would be just the main board meeting. And then people can talk if they want, yeah.
The question there becomes, if there is advice to be written on one of those topics, how does that advice get written? Because you don't wanna write advice during the full board. I mean, maybe the leadership committee could sponsor the I M team out of a, I mean, just, it gets a little twisty.
If it's once in a blue moon that we're gonna have advice come out of that group, such as, oh, we want to revise our T P A milestone or something of that sort, that would be such an exception, that, that, yeah, we could do that, have leadership committee decide. It's the feeling of the main board that we need to change these rules, and let's go forward and come up with some decent subject to talk at the next board meeting.
Except for the cleanup priorities piece, which is our, consistent every year, we do this cleanup areas advice, and where does that belong?
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Yeah, but, but, but again, a lot of that is very embargoed. Okay? And, and I think the way that it's being handled now with Chris, he's kinda acting as a cross-cutting guy in the first place. So I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Richard, is your card up or not? Okay.
I just kept not, since I was in queue. I somewhat agree. Tom, my intent was, I was adding on to your infrastructure, not just limiting it to that, what I said. So I mean, the infrastructure is the system, as well as the pipes, the pumps, the, the sewage disposal, the roads, that's all part of the infrastructure, and I think that goes under the fluid type of aspect. And then as far as the near, near cross-cutting, I think all those aspects you talk about, and even the... And then as far as the near, near cross cutting, I think all those aspects you talk about, and even the cleanup priorities can go under fluid. I mean, make it, make it the cross cutting because it will cross cut all of the, it's the essential systems that have to be in place for the demolition activities, which I would call cleanup. And the tank waste activities, you know, push, push a lot of the stuff, which, you know, historically, tank waste has spent a lot of times focusing on things that weren't really tank waste. And so that, that way moves it over and splits out, reduces some of the pressure. And similarly, you know, central plateau focused on things that weren't really actual activities out there.
My only comment...
Pump and tree. I would say pump and trees is an infrastructure.
Yeah. Richard, to your comment about the, you know, can we just consider those items under requirements section in the full board meeting, for example? Or the EIC meeting, whatever that is going to be called, leadership committee. As most all of us know, there is extremely limited time in the full HAB meeting for an agenda item. And certainly EIC never gets through the agenda, as far as I'm concerned. So there is not ever enough time to discuss new and evolving, and even critical issues that can be done and handled by the committees. So if you're depending on the leadership committee to, to be the lead in taking action, I think that's the wrong way to go.
I've got Sue and Pam, right? And Tom. Okay, Sue, Pam, and Tom.
Okay, so I'm going to tag on to Rob because I had the same thought. All right. Considering the cross cuttings, to me, Chris, what Chris Sutton did with the funding priorities this year is the perfect example of a cross cutting. He took ownership of the fact that we needed to write advice on the funding priorities. He formed a team to support him in that effort. And then he met with each committee to discuss and run past the draft advice. That is the example to me of a cross cutting activity. It isn't a permanent committee because it's not something, no, I'm going to stop you. I'm going to say it does not need to be permanently staffed. It is a task force that is formed for a particular period of time. Once the advice is submitted, the task force is, is closed, is shut down. And then next year, you form a new task force for the next year's advice. Chris, his passion is the budget and the, and the funding? He, he's the funding priority czar, for want of a better phrase. I just anointed you. In my, in my, in my mind, you are the all, you are the expert, you're the czar of all things funding. And so when you feel that we need an advice, you come to the board and you say, we need to form a task force because we need to look at preparing advice. The logistics of getting that sanctioned for the board and through the EIC, all that stuff, we can still work on. Let's get out of our own way. First, let's, you know, sit down and the cross cuttings. To me personally, and I've spent my, a lot of my professional life in the nuclear world. So I understand the importance of health and safety. We should be doing worker, care about worker, health and safety every day, whatever we're doing. Does that need, is there enough work? I mean, I've been on the committee for two years now. Is there enough work to have a standing committee for health and safety? Or is that, should that be a cross cutting function? And that way, one person who has passion for health and safety, if that person sees an issue that needs to be brought up and possibly made into advice, brings that forward and we form a task force and we deal with it and we write advice. But is there an, as a standing committee, I question that. I don't have an opinion. It can go both ways. But I think that we need to think about whether we really need to staff a standalone committee just for that topic. That's it.
On this issue, Orion?
Just to add on to what Susan said, this is just an idea. I'm not advocating for this or not advocating for this. It just popped in my head about health and safety. Could that be something that could be combined with communications and outreach?
I, I hear positive whispers over here. Pam, you're in queue?
Yes. So in regard to the cross cutting issues, I, I, I think Susan's example was excellent in terms of budget. But cleanup priorities, that, the way we've dealt with that in the past is in terms of developing our work plan for the year. And each committee is asked to identify what's important to them, what should be on the work plan for the next year. And then that's dealt with in the leadership retreat. So I would say that's an issue, that's a topic for each committee, similar to what we've talked about. But I, I really feel strongly that, that this requirement stuff, as I think Rob did an excellent job of saying, it's for the whole board and it doesn't need to be a committee, but it needs to be something that's monitored by leadership. Thank you.
Michelle's changing what she, she added to the thing. So she's not changing what you did. She's changing what she did. And we'll see what she's proposing. What are you proposing? Just don't get, just don't get wild on that new paint on the wall.
Just following up on what we already talked about, I moved two pink cards on issues that were really more about community outreach over to outreach. Took down, took down one that was redundant about risk assessment for worker and community and took down the very vague one that said risk reduction. So just clearing out some of the noise.
That's why it's all taped, not glued. Tom?
So I like the idea of taking requirements and putting it to the full board. And then if you have TPA content and changes, each specific committee would get a brief on that. I think what Chris is doing with the cleanup priorities advice is what happens, and it's, he's doing a great job at it. But it is sponsored by a committee. It's sponsored by BCC, whether it's a formal BCC meeting that sponsored it or whether it was an email. I think over lunch, if we can figure out whether the group that you're working with is the appropriate sponsor for the annual cleanup priorities advice, then we can take requirements and cross cutting committee and push that and, and disperse it. As long as we have someone to sponsor that annual cleanup priorities advice that we can appoint a czar to be the IM team lead for, I think we can make it work.
Ryan?
Okay, if I have another suggestion, that could fall under communications and outreach also.
Mike?
Yeah, response to your comment, Tom. So I, I suppose that it could be argued that Chris is sponsored under the BCC and moving forward under that sponsorship. But Chris, is it correct to say that you move forward this year with the knowledge that you were going to function as if you were a cross cutting? When, when you move forward across all the committees in the way that you did this, this, most recently this year, did you do so as sort of a test for the, the model of cross cutting?
No, I did it because I was following Tom Galiotto's lead in the past year.
Got it.
All right. Sue, are you still up?
Yeah. A lot of my career out of the box thinking and solving issues. Just because that's the way we've always done it doesn't necessarily mean that's the way it should be done, could be done. We want to do it. So I just challenge everybody to just kind of think, as we're working through all of our processes, does it make sense to do it the way it's always been done, just because it's always been done? Sorry, that's my soapbox.
Is there? There's the blue one that says that. Okay. Chris?
But to pick up on what Mike asked me, did I do this because I was thinking with cross cutting? No, but kind of in my role as temporary chair of the BCC committee, a number of things that I thought would be good presentations actually turn out to be something that I think everybody in the HAB ought to know. For example, the work breakdown structure. That could be a BCC topic, but I think it's also of interest to everybody in the HAB. What is the work breakdown structure and how does work flow down? Not so much recently, but in my first year or so at the HAB, there's a lot of talk about contracts. BCC has, you know, one of the Cs is contracts. I think the structure of contracts, how they work is something all of the HAB could deal with. So there are topics that I, a number of topics that I've thought of in the BCC context that are really cross cutting and of interest to the entire HAB. Whether they're given at a committee of the whole, whether they're given at a board meeting or something. But there's a number of things that we really haven't discussed recently that I think are, are very much cross cutting. And I thought of as under the aegis of BCC, but in fact, there are more than that, broader than that. So trying to pick up a little bit on what you said about cross cutting potential topics.
All right. Let me check with the folks on the phone. Is there anyone who's online with us who has a question or a comment? All right, Sue, your card's up. Okay, I'm not used to doing it from this angle, so I'm, I'm without some of my tools. There's some noodling on the wall. So the next question I'm going to ask you while they're playing on the wall is, the idea for lunch is twofold. Work stuff and interpersonal stuff. So when they're sort of finished here, we're going to identify what are your lunch groups? Your lunch groups are going to match up with the buckets. Pardon? Just beer. Um, barbecue, okay. I'm not there yet. So you will choose a bucket to work on. It is okay if it's only two of you or if it's more. The idea is build some community while you're doing your homework and eat lunch. For your bucket, you're going to give it a name. You're going to describe its scope. And you've got some hints up here because we've been playing with the scope, right? And if there's some clarity around what is risk reduction in my bucket, that, that's where you do it. You're going to have two hours because I want you to have time to eat and time to work and time to get to know who else is on HAB. The facilitation team will be here at the 90 minute mark so that we can type up what you come up with and put it on the screen. So the people who've dialed in have a fighting chance to read those words because this is really hard for them to see. All right?
Suggestion. I have a suggestion that before you leave, you take your phone or your iPad and you take a picture of the items in the section that you want to talk about so everybody can have that in front of them.
Okay. So the, the question we got to ask before you pick your group, we have fluid, cleanup and risk reduction, communications and outreach, tank waste. Do you want a group to work on cross cutters? I, I hear no. Okay, so four lunch groups, right? And we're going to leave these up. So we have... Oh, that is a sad black marker. We're not going to use that again. We'll do a different one.
Here, do it this way.
Communications, I'm going to call it cleanup just because it's a short line and you're going to rename it anyway. And fluid because, because, right, four groups. So... Tom? Future land use, infrastructure and disposal. All right, the instructions for your lunch work are on the way out your door. Take a picture of that, too. So you got homework. Right, so, um... You're going to, I am not going to dictate what group you're in, but for the, for the purposes of grouping before you decide lunch, fluid is in that corner, cleanup is in that corner, communications is here, and tank waste is there. I don't want to say everybody go to your corners. That sounds bad. Go to your corners and figure out in what order you want to do your homework. You can eat first, you can eat last, you can eat while you're doing your homework, totally up to your group. Fluid, cleanup, communications, tank waste. Pick your group and enjoy each other while you're doing your work over lunch.
Ruth, 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 I just want to bring up that on the agenda at 11:30, it says TPA agency reflections.
Yes!
So before we break for lunch, let's, you know, do we have anything from our agency representatives?
Good catch.
My reflection is let's go have lunch.
I second Ryan's reflection.
I agree.
All right, we have consensus. All right, find your group, make a plan and be back at 1:30 because that's when we're going to put it all together. Folks on the phone, thank you for your patience. I, I know this has been a tougher meeting for you than normal. We will be back at 1:30. Okay, okay, I'm wired. We're on. For those of you online, thank you for waiting. What we're trying to do is make sure we get all the words from the lunch small groups so that we can put them on screen and that you can follow along a little easier this afternoon than the morning session. Madam Chair, do you want to take us in or how would you like to proceed? We are on number eight, top of the page three.
I was having such a good lunch with Mike.
Well, that was part of the reason I gave you two hours for lunch was I wanted you to enjoy each other instead of the usual. We've got 10 minutes, hurry up.
So Josh is, I assume, loading things up for...
He's, he's loading one and Lacey's working on the other, so we have two ready to go.
Dan, you sent ours in?
It's on the screen behind you.
Well, it's behind, it's not on my computer.
It's not on your computer?
It's not on my computer.
Okay.
Doesn't count. It's not on my...
Then I got to fix that.
Those of us, and for those that are, are online, can't see it.
All right. See if we get this fixed. Okay, it's kind of small print. Let me see what I can do to fix that. Hang on, different computer. There's a reason it looks like, yes, we have all four. We're good. Mission accomplished. So let me see if I can get this one. Okay, just so you know, we are still recording the meeting. And let's start with... So the purpose of this agenda item is for the small groups to share their names and their descriptions of each of the buckets on the wall. That's, that's what we're doing. And who from, who from community outreach engagement wants to talk about what you did in addition to eating lunch together? He just, that's right. That's right. And he got his stuff in first.
I'm just the secretary, so... Yeah, so we selected the name of Community Outreach and Engagement Committee. Yeah, so that looks an awful lot like the... Well, I guess you replace the sign, I shouldn't be looking there. So our mission is encouraging outreach and engagement between TPA agencies and the community at large, creating opportunities for communication and dialogue. These may include, and this is really four bullets, these may include sharing community values and concerns, regional and local public health and safety, public involvement strategies, and effective information transfer.
You have a fan.
I would like to say that I'm really impressed with the members of this committee and in particular, Michelle, who's... Yeah. Who outraced all of us in doing this great writing, so thank you, Michelle.
Questions for the group? Mike?
Well done. Question. When you say effective information transfer, what do you envision? What does that look like?
That wasn't part of the assignment.
Do you want us to slice that more thinly?
Do you want ham or turkey?
You know, probably real... I think I realized that the question may be a little bit passive aggressive, so when you say effective information transfer... But it wasn't intended to be passive aggressive. I just came to that conclusion in the silence. Does that, does that look like effective information transfer from the TPA to the communities? Does that also look like effective information transfer to and from the HAB and its constituencies wherever appropriate? Because I know some don't have them. Yeah? I see some head nods from Michelle. That was it?
I was going to be a little bit smart and just say it meant whatever the people who wrote it on the little pink card thought it meant, but yes, we did talk about both of those.
Well, as you know, that's been an area that I've had some interest in, so I appreciate you taking that into consideration when you develop this fine statement, so... Thanks.
Other questions or comments or applause? All are welcome. Rob?
There, can you hear me? One of the things that we made sure we did is include the requirements from the yellow stuff and also the TPA requirements out of the pink stuff in our discussion, in our statement there. And I wondered, did you guys think about that when you were developing your scope?
She just passed. She just passed the buck, Trace.
We just addressed the sticky notes that were below the main committee name, so that's what we considered.
Very cool. Very cool. Okay, you ready for number two? Is this going to be... Okay. No, that's not it. Sorry. I was having so much fun working on the wall. Now I got to work on the computer. I want to go back to the wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lacey, you got the computer.
Yeah, Lacey, the computer. What the heck? Okay.
Who turned in a blank sheet?
No, this is the... Share your... Go for it, save me from myself. Geez. Um... Yeah. That's going to be harder. Just share it so the folks out there can see it and I will figure this out. No, actually, it has to be... Why? Do you have it?
It's up, yeah.
It's... No, it's because he needs this.
It's on the computer.
Yeah, it's on the computer. Will that reach? No, it's showing my screen is the thing, but for some reason, the... Okay, we'll do it this way.
Yeah, it's on my screen.
Will it plug into...
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
Technology is so wonderful when it works.
Oh, that's too good. Okay. Who put in the chat? There should be a way to get an H in there so it'll be the charm committee.
I was thinking Carmen.
Okay.
Is that my name time? Have we been unplugged?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Tell me, is it going to plug?
I just...
Oh.
How long is it going to take?
Took me a second. I'm five steps behind.
Okay.
Well, it's online for all the people that are online.
It's online for all the people... No, and I just...
Where are we at?
Did you get it?
We got it.
All right, we walk close to the...
See, that's the thing.
Sorry, sorry.
That's the thing, absolutely. Okay, and I'm going to set up the next one.
Okay, I was just the note taker, so maybe Tom or Pam or Jan or somebody wants to share.
So I guess I'm talking. So the Cleanup and Risk Mitigation Committee, CARM, we took DOE's description of risk management from the placemat and modified it such that it now reads that we are chartered to develop advice pertaining to characterization and cleanup of the Central Plateau and Columbia River Corridor waste sites, disposition of unused facilities, groundwater investigation remediation, and closure of waste management areas.
Talk about this and then after I finish this, we'll only have one document we have to show and we'll be good. So, yeah.
I think that the soil contamination could fall under that, yeah, waste site, not empty tanks, but the contamination associated with the waste management area. There's cross... That would be one of those cross-cutting dual meetings.
Yeah, I just have one suggestion. Change your name to Cleanup Hanford and then you get the charm.
Adding words for acronyms.
Tom?
And just a question. Does this committee, would this committee have the responsibility for handling off-normal events like the tunnel collapse or release of radioactive material from wherever?
I would say probably, yeah. Emerging issues are going to be issue-specific.
Okay, so it's not something you think you have to stay... I was thinking about, you mentioned unused facilities, but also recovery from off-normal events, is that...
Risk mitigation is designed to avoid those problems. So I think if there was a problem that wasn't a tank farm-related problem, that would be all under the risk mitigation slash stuff. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You're done, right? Just... Yeah, thank you.
Do we have anybody online who wants to... Who has a question? All right, do you want to go to the next one? So if I share my screen, this is magically going to work?
I know.
Okay.
Hey, fluid.
Okay. Pardon? Don't worry about it. It's a... So I'm... We're routing around because...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we installed a dash in our name, and so we're future land use, infrastructure, And so we focus on current and future land status of the site, which would include public access to areas like Rattlesnake or the river, the location of disposal sites, and, you know, whether they'll be cleaned up or not, given the status of that as an overview, river impacts. And then under, if we can scroll down, under the inf... And here's, we got some cross-infrastructure. We would have excess facilities to discuss, maintenance functions, which is global across that. That would be sewer, water, roads, electric, infrastructure, waste disposal, and by waste disposal, I mean the day-to-day moving it around, characterizing. This is the nuts and bolts of things happening out there. Waste management, true waste shipment, waste management, what's in central waste complex and when's it going? And that's where true waste comes in. Permits, which I'm talking site-wide permits, not just simply a operating permitted VIT plan or something of that nature. And min-safe activities overall. And min-safe activities would include fire department, what, you know, Hanford Patrol, inspection of the various waste sites, inspection of the various waste facilities, and that's all part of that min-safe infrastructure as well as the site monitoring, you know, those kind of activities. I think that...
Jan?
No, you can't have it.
That's right. Come on.
You can't have it, I told you you can't.
So as soon as you said infrastructure, I started thinking about some of the things that we heard about last night, like the upgrade of the electrical systems through the Bonneville Power Administration, right? And also, I've been very curious about, actually, what I want to do is see the new water treatment plant. And I'm just wondering if those things that you would feel like those would be in your purview.
The scariest place I've ever been on Hanford Site in my 35 years out there is next to the water retention basin where the water, raw water comes into the site. You go down these old 1940s, you go down into what's a dungeon, and then you realize what's on the other side of that wall. Must be five tons of water. If that wall were to give way, you're dead. That's the scariest, scariest location I've ever been. And just yesterday, I was talking to someone who works for HMIS, and they agreed that was the scariest thing they've ever done, go down there. So we're going to ask for a tour.
Okay.
Get scared.
Gary, it's on the list. All right, I've got Tom Cecilia, Mike Birkenball, and Sue Coleman.
So I really like the way that these are fitting together. So once the true gets dug out of the ground and goes to the central waste complex, then it gets passed over to the other committee, and that makes sense and we're, you know, not duplicating talks, and I really like that concept.
The thought is not letting one committee get distracted.
All right. Mike and then Sue.
My next, I think somebody's before me.
You're next. I... We can let Sue go before you.
Yeah, go ahead, Sue.
Okay, I'll go. Not to totally mess up your acronym, but your acronym starts with future and then your first section starts with current and future. So...
Current and future land use.
Yeah, but you've got, the acronym is future, starts with future.
Right. In future land use, future infrastructure, future, we're looking forward and we wanted to keep the acronym accurate.
I know, I'm just messing up with your acronym because, like I said, the first subsection is current and future land status, so you're talking about today as well as the future.
We could reword the thing, so we were the LUS committee, L-U-S. I'll figure out some words to put in it.
Yeah.
I mean, having been from FFTF where we actually worked really hard at acronym development.
That's important.
I mean, the BRT, right? The big round thing.
Yeah, and on that note, I think like what Steve, what Steve brought up was part of the group and what we're trying to maintain is that we can't lose sight about, yeah, what's the work that's currently functioning, especially our, as our budget crew, Chris, would say, hey, guess what, things are going to go out of budget, but this, guess what, this is the work that has happened for future, like Richard mentioned, but you got to demonstrate what has actually happened, current. So, you know, I think it's a work in progress, right, where everything...
Esteban, I totally get it because I'm more, I'm concerned about today also, but your acronym starts off with future. So I just wanted to, I don't want people to be misled in thinking, see the title and think it's future, not current.
Mike?
Yeah, I was feeling pretty misled there. Just kidding. Can you explain the difference, because I'm not sure, and it is a question, between excess facilities and unused facilities as was communicated previously?
I think there's possible overlap.
Okay.
I mean, you know, excess unused facilities or maybe need to be disposed, I'm not quite sure it really belongs over there, it's a risk.
Okay.
I mean, you know, there are lots of excess facilities for our area, right? It's a resource.
One way to look at it could be, once the reactor is cocooned, then it's fluid, but buildings that are being torn down on the Central Plateau would be disposition of unused facilities as opposed to monitoring.
Well, I'm looking at FMEF, for example. Yeah, if there was a project that would be, would be proposed to go into that very nice building, it would come to that fluid committee.
I understand.
FMEF, meaning...
Fuels and Material Examination Facility, it's a very large facility in the foreign area.
Thank you. I think the most important thing with this and with all of this is that resonates with the all, right? So that's where the question came from. Not long ago, there was an email that I was copied on that came from headquarters, and they don't want to use the term min-safe anymore. So I'll take an action to work with Gary and see what that alternate term was, but they're trying to purge that from our lexicon, not just the HAB lexicon, but I think DOE lexicon. I don't know why.
Essential, essentials.
Whatever you come up with.
We'll see what we can find. I think there was a, instead of use X, so, and I won't pretend to know what's all behind it.
Yeah, Mike, I think the term was base operations.
Essential base operations, maybe, whatever it becomes. Okay. He thinks that was it.
I've got Chris and Jacob.
With regard to facilities, there's a whole series of documents that have to be developed and many of which have to be approved by the ecology, possibly EPA, depending on who has jurisdiction. And these could include DQO sessions, sampling and analysis plans, work plans, so on and so forth. And it could be that the development of all those plans falls under CARM, but when But when they actually start taking down the buildings, at that point, maybe it goes over to you.
Well, I put permits in there and I'm inferring to the site wide permits and permits and reports or something of that nature. Because mostly what Charms looking at is a particular site's remedial action or, you know, vit plant. I'm not talking about individual permits, but at the site wide level, like the rad air permit comes out, which is, covers everything.
Those permits are different, but they're different than the circle permits that the circle documents that EPA requires. And if they're circle documents, I think they ought to fall under CARM.
Right. A circle document would be, would be an action specific, which is what they're talking about. I'm talking about the day to day maintenance documents that go out there. You know, we do have an NPS permit, don't we still? I think so. Oh, yeah.
Interesting distinction.
All right, so I've got Jacob and then Jeff.
We can wrestle.
Oh, you went down on purpose. Okay. Okay, cool. Jeff?
We need a Venn diagram so that we can understand how these things sort out. And I don't think we necessarily need to do that today. But as this effort moves forward, that would be a very, very good communication methodology. Thanks.
All right. Other questions about this bucket now called fluid? Okay, one more to go. Who wants to speak to tank farms and WTP?
I can't start. We didn't come up with an acronym. Sorry. But it seemed, it seemed really obvious that we were kind of looking at the big picture and how the budgets come out and how Vance's talks were in that we tried to stay within maybe that arena. Looking at the holistic process of the tank farm operations, the operation of the immobilization facility and all the downstream facilities there. So what we're going to do with the liquid waste, the two gallons that we generate for one gallon of waste, what do we do with it, is also considered here. We also included, now my eyes are having problems focusing on that. Can we make that larger, please? Okay, like I said, my eyes aren't.
Better?
Good, better, better. Actually, I get to have some cataracts removed this next month, I think. Okay, so some of the areas we wanted to think that we would cover would be the project management and operational risks. Understanding that these are reports that are going to be ongoing throughout the operation of the tank farms and the facilities that support the DF law process. We want to stay tuned to technology development with respect to the tank farms and what's going on there with the processing of waste. We also want to make sure we stay tuned to the nuclear waste and making sure radioactive waste. There was like four cards up there, one for the waste disposition, one for the waste storage. So we kind of just lumped them together under one, thinking that this would look like looking at the waste form, what we're generating, where it's disposition, stabilization process that we prefer and the storage. Next was the waste treatment activities. There's some exciting things going on in waste treatment that really is within that technology development. Tank integrity and inspections, I think that's a critical thing that we always need to pay attention to, especially considering that there's a number of projections of future leaks in our tanks. And that's the reason why the next last bullet is tank leaks. And then, as we point out that in the processing of tank waste, the pretreatment of that activity is very important. Tisker seems to be a very good success at this point. And we want to continue this. We know that there are outfits that are working on modified or much improved Tisker operation. And the only, the one thing I think I missed on was that in the in the latest report that I got from, I can't remember the date on this, 2016, was the dosil tank integrity and assessment report. And they called out, a big point was that we should include here that we didn't, would be all the waste transfer systems.
All right, so where's the, all right, I'm in. So where is the?
Okay, I guess he wants to join a committee.
You're here. We love it. So I'd like to include the piping, so, you know, how we're going to move the waste around to also include there. At some point, somebody might say, oh, it's assumed because we're looking at the entire realm. But I think it's critical enough that they spelled it out in their tank transfer systems as being a critical risk potentially for the process. So with that, oh, then, then we did write some words here. Somebody asked for words rather than, so I can read it if want. The scope of this work group committee. Actually, Rob, why don't you read it? This first ones are your words. Very good words at that.
There we go. Okay, this is just kind of our scope statement. I think it would have been better to have this up there first and then all of the bullets second, but that's okay. The scope of this work group, and I use the term work group versus committee just to seem, it's a little bit more updated, but whatever. Includes all aspects of processing of contacts, contents of the tanks, including the integrity, operational aspects and maintenance of containment and processing facilities. Consider the WT and tank farm operations. Consider technology development and various options for the waste form, disposition and mobilization and storage. And also consider future tank leaks and tank integrity. So basically what we're saying is that everything from the tanks themselves up through, all the way through the vit plant and the processes to ensure the integrity and processes and procedures are in place to ensure the integrity of all of the, all of those systems up through the point where we've got glass made and it's ready to be shipped off to that other group.
All right, Chris, is your card still up? Okay, so let's do Tom and then Chris. And then Jacob.
To add to what was just said, if you remember, for example, last night at the public meeting, Tom Fletcher showed again a diagram, which we've seen a number of times, that shows that there are 25 separate processes that have to act in synchrony in order to wind up with vitrified waste and disposal. But the key word to what they're saying is operations. And that diagram summarizes everything. It integrates everything from the tank farms through the end processes of waste disposal, going through the WTP plant. And all of those operational aspects, I think, are what this committee or work group, their scope is. And although we can't put that diagram in words explicitly, because none of us had it here today, but that diagram, I think, summarizes what this committee is concerned with. Starting from the tank farms through WTP, whether it's low level or high level, whether it's grout or pure vitrification, I think it's summarized by the word operations and by that diagram.
All right. Tom?
A comment and a question. The line there that says, consider the WTP and tank farm operations. If you were to name the committee WTP and tank farm, that would be an interesting acronym. But that's, sorry. Permits, we talked about permits being under fluid, but it seems like the site wide permit, I think, is going to have some tank stuff in it. Yeah? So maybe we need to consider a task force for the site wide permit when it comes out next year, as opposed to trying to put it into a committee.
Tanks and WTP. I meant both are going to be in the permit.
Oh, I thought you were thinking of an acronym.
Help us out here, Jacob. Hug the mic so folks can hear you.
Sorry, I didn't even have it on. So I realize you have the word all aspects and that really means all. But because the fluid team used the word permit.
It should be site wide purpose.
Yeah, I was going to say, it might be worth distinguishing what permits this group would be interested in. I don't know. The other one is, I asked if CARM owned the empty tanks that are closed and these words don't quite cover the closed tanks or the closing or the empty tanks. I'll even say, well, closed or not, I don't know, somewhere, someone ought to capture that.
Richard?
I think Charm should take the empty tank farm. I don't care if you want them, I don't want them in fluid.
So the waste and tank farms, waste treatment plan and tank farms committee would then take, like through the weir process and then after the weir, it goes to?
No, I'll take the weir over.
You got weir?
I'll take weir.
All right.
Yeah, and the new folks are going, the acronyms are killing us.
And the one thing that I wanted to say that I think has been overlooked is, you mentioned it just in passing, Rob, but it should be somewhere that the transport, that those pipes that transport the tank waste should probably be called out, otherwise they'd look a lot like infrastructure.
Rob, hug that mic.
Sorry. If you look at the term processing facility, that means everything from here to there. We could, we could go ahead and include it specifically.
The same thing for operational aspects. I thought, oh, that might be, well, close enough.
Well, I think the processing facility really includes the hardware.
Yeah. Let me encourage, there are 17 people online, so if you use your mic, they can hear you.
Let me jump in real quick. The pipe leading to a tank is part of the tank. Technically, regulatorily, it's, that's, or actually, the pipe leaving the tank is part of the tank. The pipe going to the tank is the facilities.
Okay, I've got Sue and Rob.
Okay, I'm a word geek to some degree. The word all, in all aspects. Are there aspects that may not be part of this committee? Because once you use that word all, it's absolute. It implies absolute.
Richard?
Well, you know, having worked tank farms, AY 102, there's a certain part where it leaves the tank farms, right? And goes over to ERTIF, gets disposed. That's, we had the discussion of dangling pumps in midair while you macro encapsulated them. And I'm happy that have supported EPA on, let's do common sense and put it into the, put it into the barrow ground before we macro encapsulate it. So, you know, maybe you don't need the word all, you know, just specifics. I mean, I don't know why you threw all in there.
Well, I think the reason why we were pressured to write a paragraph in five minutes and it sounded good, so. We could remove the word all and then say, aspects of processing and permitting.
We could, and that would be fine. My background is operations. And when I say, oh, from this point to this point, anything in there is all. But we're talking a processing, a process that, that processes the waste from here to there. That's everything in there. We're talking about the process itself. I'm not talking about, you know, what happens before here. That's not part of the process. It, process ends when we've got a glass, what do they call the ingots? I don't know what they're, with the.
Castor.
The caster. When it's ready to be shipped off, that's when our process ends. So anything in between there, whether it's the maintenance aspects, whether it's the permitting aspects of just that piece, the the technical aspects that had to be considered in that process, all of that, to me, is part of what this group needs to, needs to cover.
Rob?
So could you remove the word all?
I'm going to remove the word all. Yes?
Okay. Aspects of processing and permitting constituents of the, et cetera. Sounds good.
Tom, our other Tom.
Thanks. I'd suggest that in view of the fact that each of these four teams, I think, did a great job. But it was done in a relatively short time over eating and drinking and learning about families. So my suggestion would be to ask the operations work group to take this as as, as great suggestions for establishing the scope, but really decide that it all interacts together. And that we're not dropping something out of the cracks between one team or the other that we don't recognize right now. Thanks.
Funny that they're actually meeting on Thursday. It's a busy week. Okay. So I've got Richard and, Rob, is your card still up? Okay, so I've got Richard up next. Richard, can you hold for clarity to make sure we understand what Tom Galliotto wants?
I think I would help with, I'll clarify what he's.
Go.
He's suggesting the working group take this and maybe massage it together. And you were worried about things falling through the cracks. Everybody's worried, well, is there overlap? I don't think overlap is an issue. Falling through the cracks is more, more appropriate. So I mean, if, you know, different subcommittees can negotiate over who's got that. I mean, so if the, if the pump is stuck in the hole coming out of the tanks, that's yours. If it can't ship, that might be mine.
All right. And we have almost, I think we're only missing one member of the operations work group who is not physically in this room right now, two. Oh, we're missing two. That's right, Jeff isn't here. So we're missing Jeff and Rebecca. But we have the majority of the operations work group is hearing this, which is good. Jacob?
Now, sorry to bring the same subject over again. But did I hear that fluid is going to take the weir and for tank closure? And cram is going to take everything else and tank isn't going to take any? CARM, I'm sorry. Cram CARM, it's the same. You know, and, yeah. And then when you say weir, do you really mean DEWE 435.1 closure plan, of which the weir is a tiny, tiny, tiny fraction of? But this committee is often referred to the we're when they really meant the 435 dot one closure plan.
Well, I mean, no, the we're we're process occurs multiple times. The the tank closure has a we're, but there are other we're's out there such as a we're for the fluent leaving vit plant, the we're that leaves the evaporator.
I just wanted to make sure you're taking all of them.
Right, so
It's part of waste management.
I I'm willing to bet that Michelle's card is up because the we're is is wearying if you don't know what it stands for.
Well, just because you're weary.
Yes, and once you hear what it stands for, it still doesn't say what it does.
Waste incidental to reprocessing.
Yeah, and that what it does has absolutely nothing to do with that title.
It basically says it's it's a it's a approach to evaluate ways to see if it needs to remain classified as high level waste.
That's right. And apparently it's done more than one place.
The the waste origin used to define what the hazards were. But here we are 40, 50, 60 years later. The definition of where that waste came from, a nuclear reactor, experimental reactor, a bomb, whatever it came from. It it's meeting has changed. And so the weird process is a way of defining things such that we're evaluating on the true risk to people and the true risk to getting it done. That's how I interpreted the weird process. It was a good thing. It is a good thing.
With a funny acronym. Okay, I've got cards up over here. I've got Mike and Chris and Tom. Jacob, are you still up? Okay, Richard, are you still up? Okay. I don't know what order the three of you went up in, so Chris, go.
I wouldn't worry too much about overlap at this point in the game and who exactly does what. The point of the fact is if issues arise in the future, you're going to form an IM team and IM team typically has people from multiple committees. So regardless of something is a little uncertain as whether it's here or there, you can draw upon people from both committees or multiple committees to address the issue.
Yeah, on a similar track. When when we're developing the work plan, when the leadership is developing the work plan for the next year, that'll be the time for the chair of each of these committees to say, we'll take that one. You take that one. And if there's overlap, we can plan a joint meeting type thing. Regarding the the mission that I heard from Tom for the Ops Work Group, I think part of it's going to be turning this into a comprehensive document as opposed to four disparate voices. Knowing that the overlap is going to be taken care of in work planning. Just making sure that it's clear and someone reading this isn't going to be like, why is this jumping so much in style? Is that where you were going with it, part of it? Okay.
Right. So the objective is to take the recommendations from this group. And admittedly, I had you do it over lunch because wordsmithing in this bigger group might drive you to drink. Drive me to drink. But to take that and and if you want to charge the operations work group with clean it up so it can go to the board in an understandable format, which is kind of what I'm hearing you say. And I'm not seeing people from the Ops Work Group running away screaming from that request. It's on the inside. Oh, they're screaming on the inside. Okay.
I was gonna hire Michelle to to clean up the mission statements for all of them. She's did such a wonderful job with the engagement.
So so the idea is that the 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 cleaned up version of what you just created would go to the full board in April for its consideration and approval of are these the committees you want for FY 2024? That's that's the path here. Mike.
Tom, is that what you meant?
I think so. I I was only concerned that the committee was going to the working group was going to run with these words and and put them in concrete and show them to the full half. And that's I don't think they're ready for prime time yet, but they're good suggestions.
Okay, so my concern was that the work group would would take them, run with them and bring them forward. But there's a step that I want to make sure we capture, and that's that we get the blessing of the folks that spent the time to work on each of these to say, that's what we intended to communicate, convey. That's a really important step because one of the things that we're seeking from the Ops Work Group is that that this collective body, this committee of a whole can then come before the entire board and then champion the words that are on paper and be able to explain those. So that it's not the committee, not the Ops Work Group that has to do that, right? That it's that there's a united front that says, yep, those are the words and they they mean something and here's what they mean. And so that's that's what we're really looking for is that synergy. Does that make sense to everybody? Because that's that's my concern is that, yep, the the work group can do that. We've got the the capability to do that. And I would caution the work group that we don't read too much into it, that we just clean it up and and seek alignment. I've got one question about this last one, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that. And that's probably fine, Mike. I understand what you're looking for. The concern is that are we missing anything that we just glossed over in these short discussions? And and the working groups, if they observe that, have the right to put that in before it goes to the board. That's all.
Okay, thank you for that. And then off separately, I'm a little bit concerned about the the use of the word tech technology because it disappeared a couple of times. And, you know, the the board is not three things. It's not regulatory a body. It's it's not an oversight body, technical authority. It's not. It's not regulatory. It's not oversight. It's not a technical authority. And so I understand that there's an interest in technology, but as as we move forward, I'm concerned that you might get some feedback on that. So.
I'm, Rob, can you hold? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
We have public comments scheduled at 2:30 and and we're a little behind that. And I want to make sure if there is anybody online or in the room who wants to make public comment that we honor that time. And then we'll pick up right next with you, okay? Is there anybody online or in the room who
I would like to.
Yes.
Hi.
And can you?
Sure. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can I can hear you. Would you please share your name so folks
My name is Stephen Fine. Michelle Mullen suggested that I look into some of your meetings and then Jennifer has been so helpful. So I want to thank you all. And a good day. My name is Stephen Fine, and I'm an engineer and an MBA, a hazardous chemical businessman and consultant for science and business. By chance, around 2016, I was performing some consulting that exposed me to the Hanford Reservation and specifically the vitrification plant. When I researched the history of the vitrification plants since 1989, the year Hanford was decommissioned, I was aghast at the objectives, action, inertia, and all round handling of the 56 million gallons of mixed radioactive hazardous waste held in the 170 tanks for decades. Over 30 years that there has not been a gallon treated formally from the tanks. And last year, there was $1.5 billion spent to maintain the waste in the tanks and continue to build the defloap plant pursuant to treating finer filtered waste from the Tisker process, which separates high versus low radioactive waste. The final filter of waste is watery and radiation is not more than one would experience in a medical test. 90% of the waste in the tanks have been determined to be mixed low radioactive waste and not typically processed by vitrification. For decades in Savannah, most of the waste consistent with the watery, low radioactive nature of the final filter race from the Tisker has been immobilized and then solidified with an appropriate concrete and then buried. In addition, the waste in the 170 tanks at Hanford have to be diluted. So actual treatment of the waste would involve more than two to three times to 50 gallons in the tank farm. Treatment has been estimated under all conditions as 60 plus years. Her non-cost models presented in August 2021 by Laura Crey of the Washington River Protection Solutions, the company maintaining the waste in the tank. A 1 million gallon sample vitrification model was a non-cost million gallon sample vitrification model was created from Hanford information based on the number of days it would take to Tisker to separate 1 million gallons, which was 154 days. Results were that not more than one third of the million gallons would be vitrified. And two thirds or more of the inputted waste would end up as secondary waste. The secondary waste would be treated by other methods than vitrification. Most of the secondary waste would be handled by immobilized and solidified by concrete. But there are still questions regarding the nature of the secondary waste and its danger. The vitrification model was based on a 70% efficiency. But vitrifications typically are 40% efficiency, so the output would take more time, input and money. Aside from this treatment performance, there would be 3 million gallons of diesel fuel required or 19,000 gallons a day. And that would create near 20,000 metric tons of CO2. There would be 150 truckloads of hazardous chemicals required. This is per this model. There would be 2 million gallons of water used wherein most would be contaminated and be secondary waste. There was a statement that vitrification actually could create 30 high hazard consequences. The amount of energy used would power some 15,000 homes as with vitrification, the process requires 2,000 Fahrenheit feet. Alternatively, Ms. Crey did a non-cost model on grouting, and this means immobilizing the waste and then solidifying with a proper concrete. This is versus the common term when concrete is just poured on some waste without treatment. The model was based on input from the Savannah River operation. All waste was treated. There was no secondary waste. There was no heat, diesel fuel, copious amounts of water or hazardous chemicals. The process was environmentally clean. The amount of energy was small compared to the energy used with vitrification. There were no hot high hazard consequences. The process in solidifying with concrete would create 1.6 gallons per gallon input, but DOE would only charge per inputted waste. This grouting process would be one tenth of the cost of vitrification and save tens of billions of dollars per GAO and NAS. Relative to the arguments that the tanks at Hanford have hundreds of hazardous chemicals versus a simpler mixture at Savannah, the contractor Permitix Northwest reports all the hazardous chemicals listed in the tanks it can and have treated. In addition, Jim Conca, a PhD in geoscience who is known to most of you, categorically stated that the grouting process could handle the total myriad of hazardous wastes. As related in articles, Permitix has the capability to handle 300,000 gallons of waste per year now, which is equivalent to 1 million gallons inputted for vitrification as the vit plant would do about 300,000 vitrified gallons for 1 million gallons inputted. In various articles, Permitix could scale up to 3 million gallons per year, and this is equivalent to 9 million gallons input into the vitrification process. But over 6 million of the inputted waste would be secondary waste, not vitrified. Governor Inslee was written up in the New York Times in August as one of the first to advocate climate change. The legislature of Washington State has advocated climate change and control of CO2 and other deleterious harmful chemicals. The United States government has stated that any government contractor that does over 7 million gallons, $7 million a year must restrict and control their environmental impact. As a pragmatic businessman, it seems logical that Permitix should start immediately to treat waste, which would lessen the pressures of leaky tanks, create tank space and allow the Tisker to keep processing with the extended consent decree initiation date in mid 2025. Vitrification should proceed, and since it estimated it will take 70 years to treat the waste, there there minimally should be two processing systems treating the waste. The result would be backup, for example, something where the Y as vitrification was delayed. Waste should get treated faster and cheaper. In a recent NAS study on low rad waste, it was stated that grouting would save billions and push the timeline of treated waste back 10 years if waste were grounded offsite and buried offsite. And the burying offsite would prevent issues with groundwater at Hanford. It is noted that Permitix with its national plants has immobilized and then solidified with proper concrete over 1 million gallons since its inception in 1992. I will not discuss where the waste is buried as a recent rod by DOE proposes to bury secondary waste processed by Permitix in different places. I can only say I live by the notion that the past is over. Waste issues, I must solve, and the future is an illusion. So by immobilizing all the waste and solidifying the proper concrete without an environmental impact, we can start treating now, lessen the environmental impact of vitrification and save a lot of money. We must question if money will be available with all issues confronting our government. We must consider climate change and that Hanford is an earthquake zone. So time is urgent because if there is a black swan event, there may be no chance to treat the waste. Finally, fear of losing revenue by not vitrifying seems irrelevant as treatment of waste will take some 60 to 70 years. And concerns over jobs for labor are also false as there is a scarcity of worker. One can only ask if there will be enough workers in the future. So let us be courageous and do what GAO, NRC, NAS, DOE, and most credible scientific bodies propose. It's time to move forward with sanity and an open mind. Start treating waste by immobilizing, solidifying with the proper concrete. Simultaneously, we move forward with the construction of the defloap plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to make public comment at this time? All right, Rob, I'm sorry that interrupted you. I I tried to keep the public comment on time. We've got three, four people in queue and a break scheduled about 2:45. So, Rob.
Okay, Mike, you had asked about the technical, the word
Technology.
Been there. We really took that originally from what's over here in the in the TPA. One of the categories that they have there and ended up in our yeah, our pile of stuff. So I guess if if you can provide some clarity on what TPA wants us to look at, then maybe we can refine what we we need to include.
No, I'm satisfied. It was just a question. And sometimes we tend to wander off into the technical.
I understand.
And we self correct ourselves. I mean, it that's that's never been an issue. So.
Yeah, I'm not a I'm not a detailed person.
Yeah.
So I like to stay high level.
Yeah. So I did. I did have a second and last comment. So in in this definition and in the spirit of what Tom has asked for, I'm I'm reading the I'll call it the definition for lack of better term. And I thought that your work to revise the first sentence was impactful. I note that it says contents of contents of tank, including tank integrity. And then we go down to the bottom of the very last sentence, consider future tank leaks and tank integrity. Can the operations work group, when we come back together, back to shorten that up? When I look at consider future tank leaks and tank integrity, to me, that sounds like tank integrity. And so I just wanted to ask that in the clear so that if I go back and propose that you get rid of the last sentence, will you be okay with that?
I think so. However, the fact that we were a little slow to respond to the last tank leak and and if we we because we didn't spell it out. And I kind of felt that we need to respond somehow. I don't know. The other thing is is that when you talk about the technology, we've been reviewing certain technology advancements for a very long time. I take people back to the development, all the various crawlers and etc., the vacuum pumps and that. We had discussions about you know, everything from the vapors to We had discussions about, you know, everything from the vapors to, I can't, slipping out of my mind now, but, you know, lots of technology has been discussed and looked at, and people, and we have, I think we have supported the general term of technology development in the Tank Waste Committee for a very long time, and we've had a lot of presentations. You know, for example, drilling the holes in the top of the tank, so we can get a camera down there. Using the, we had huge discussions about using the garnet and what the garnet would do to the future waste processing, because what's going into the tank. All those kinds of subjects were discussed within tank groups, I think, for the most part, and I kind of felt they just still fit in there. So if we want to do that a little differently, the thing is, is technology development gives us all great hope that we're getting there, that we're working on it. So as a positive statement, that's how it's meant.
Yeah, that, I concur. Peace on technology and where it came from and what your intent is. I think I should have said technical more than than technology, because we can become too technical. And if you recall, I think it was last fall, perhaps in October, we received a feedback from Hanford Communities, I think it was, that says, hey, at times, we can be too technical, and it's churning folks off. And I understand that there's a balance, and so it's more of a comment to seek to strive to find that balance, because at times, we can become so technical that we alienate a substantial base. Yeah, that's where it came from. Thanks for entertaining my questions.
Pam?
Mike, thanks for that clarification. Years ago, we had a Hanford Site Technology Coordinating Board, and the HAB was invited to have two participants. I was one, Shelley Simone was the other. We participated in that for years, learned the challenges for getting technology developed and funded, and that provided a platform for us to, outside of the HAB, advocate in Washington DC, because sometimes the AM50 tech budget was pathetic, and we particularly needed it at Hanford. So I'd be a strong advocate for advocating technology development, and we should back away from the technical. Thank you.
Right. Madam Chair, my suggestion is that we break until 3:00, and then we use our remaining time for setup, next steps, and those sorts of things.
Works for me.
All right. Please join us at 3:00. All right, let's grab our seats. I have intriguing question number one for you, so grab your seats. Okay, I don't have the question, but Tom Galliotto came to me with a question, and before we jump into the setup and next steps, I want to make sure that we answer your question about the first two columns of cards. Is that right? Would you help the group understand your concern? And I think there is an answer.
I thought when we broke this morning before we went to lunch, that we decided we weren't going to have a standing committee to deal with the cross-cutting efforts, and that's why we removed the heading, and we removed some of the tasks that were under there and put them under other tasks. My question to Ruth after, when the break started, was what are we doing? I thought we were going to have a discussion about the cross-cutting items and how they were going to be managed in this meeting, and I hadn't seen or heard that, and I think that's a critical issue. There's still issues under there, under that unidentified committee over there that have to be addressed by someone, and if that's going to be a separate task, or if all of those are going to be absorbed into the other four committees, I thought that was, that's my question.
Yeah. So for those of you who want to know what specifically the boxes are we're talking about, it's the column that starts with the yellow funding priorities and then has the pink next to it. It's those two columns of things. So, Tom? Oh, Chris was going to do everything. That's the answer.
Chris is the answer.
Oh, I missed that.
Chris isn't.
But Tom's card is up, so we'll go with Tom.
So this is the group that originally was in the egg, and the egg was badly presented, and I apologize for that. The egg is Chris. You have an expert who presents. But I think what we talked about before lunch, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm missing, remembering, we're going to have, when it's truly a cross-cutting topic, we'll have a moment in full board meetings to discuss that. If it's a TPA change that is a specific committee, that'll go to that committee. And if there's something cross-cutting that's too big for a full board meeting, you would either have the EIC or another committee sponsor the IM team to start the work and to even plan a committee of the whole on the topic, if it's something that we really want to brief on, and it doesn't really fit into one of the committees, and it doesn't fit into a full board. So it's more nimble. It's, you know, most of these things are going to be covered in those other committees. I'm assuming that the TPA agencies will come to the CARM and say, hey, there's a new milestone package coming on the central plateau, this adaptive milestone is going to be updated, that type of thing. Does that answer the, am I misspeaking what I remember?
Well, it sounds like a good theory, but if you're presenting, if somebody is presenting this officially to the full HAB in April, that has to be defined, because that's a huge task that the HAB used to perform, still needs to perform. And if you have no defined path in order to accommodate that, for example, is Chris going to be the egg master, or what are we going to designate as Chris that says, here's where-
Chris has left the building.
What, Chris, okay. Are we going to identify a person, or an organization, or a name that controls that kind of function for the crosscuts? And if not, then they have to be reabsorbed into every one of the other committees.
Yeah, I think both of those rows belong in all four of those other committees, if that makes sense.
No.
Well, because spending, well, funding cleanup costs, all that stuff is not really ever going to be talked about, because we're never going to get those numbers. But cleanup priorities has already been taken by community outreach and engagement. All the risk mitigation, the TPA changes, TPA content, is going to be presented to each committee that is impacted by the changes.
Okay, so there is no function over those crosscuts. It's up to the four committees to identify advice, or whatever the action is, advice letter, white paper, identify them from the existing committees. So there is no function there at all.
Unless, yeah, unless there's something that's so big that the EIC says, hey, that really needs to be its own committee of the whole, or task force, or something like that. Yeah.
So I've got a queue. I've got Richard, Chris, and Rob in queue. Richard?
Let Mikey do it. No, the, I think your focus is who's going to do the funding letter, the funding priorities, is that it, or just the other little pieces? Because as I look through it, some of these, like risk assessment and management, safety culture comes to mind. That would probably go over to fluid. But, but specific things in tank farms, tank ops would stay there. And, you know, there are a lot of things that, you know, as the HAB may not be aware of, a lot of reports being generated by the, as a function of the TPA, that nobody's ever looked at before.
Well, the TPA issues, I agree with. We haven't really, the HAB hasn't really gotten into those, except to need to understand what the milestones are. But as far as funding and the funding levels and information, while we have been restricted on what we can obtain, my feeling is that's the situation now. That does not necessarily have to be the situation in the future. We're permitted to get some information according to headquarters. We just aren't permitted to get it locally. So I wouldn't discount that need for financial and budget information at all. It's just, is limited right now. And if you're going to put each one of the existing, or the still-standing items under that, under that list on the board, into each committee, it's just growing that, those committees' responsibilities, and it could be pretty broadly. So if, however you do it, I don't necessarily agree with that, but however you decide to do it, to handle those crosscuts, you need to be clear when you present this to the HAB, because there have been a lot of questions, as you mentioned earlier, Ruth, on the, what was it called, the resource teams, or I forget what it was.
The resource, the egg that Tom refers to, the egg.
Yeah, the Chris, the Chris items.
Questions about Chris.
There were a lot of questions on that in terms of functionality and structure. How is that going to work? Who's going to staff it? How do they get approval and sponsorship? All those things. If that all goes away, because every, because that function goes away, now each committee has a cross-cutting role, right? What you're saying. It seems a little odd to me, but however you go, you should explain this.
And that, back to one of Pam's questions early on in this meeting, had to do with the egg, and that's why, for the wall exercise, we actually backed up to an intermediate point in the operations work group meeting, to use this version of the wall rather than one that was like two walls afterwards, to take a step back from that egg, that circle that was causing concern, so that this group could look at, in essence, the predecessor to the egg, and how that came about, and then decide for yourselves, what did you want to do with those two lines of scope? So that was, that was the intention behind this wall.
Does everybody understand that?
Did that, yeah, maybe you need to say it in English.
So the egg is gone, right? So we had the egg, egg at form, and when we got the feedback, this is, hey, look, this is confusing. So we've backed that mess up to where this is pre-egg, and you're right there right now. And so, Tom, what I heard you say, I want to ask this question. So aside from those things up there that are in the two columns that are related to funding or budget, we shouldn't have orphaned anything. In previous approach, there should be homes for those things that aren't related to that, and I think that'd probably be helpful if we could explore that. And then, you know, we've talked about what was the BCC and the approach to have Chris, for example, and other interested parties float across those committees. So if something spins out of that particular committee that says, hey, look, we've got some definite interest here about funding-related or priorities-related, that advice could then come out of that committee, right? Those questions could then come out of that committee. But I don't have a sense that we have really intentionally orphaned anything. Maybe it just wasn't as visible it is today, because we've taken it from the MOU, the majority of them are pink, I'll just say that, and now they're right there, and we're looking at them. So I'm wondering if this group could then, if time allows, take another pass at those and say, okay, where could they go? Because then I think that addresses some of the pre-egg stuff. Is that, would that approach be acceptable?
Yeah, I think so. I don't want to take up the rest of the planned committee time, but my only concern would be, we don't want to orphan everything that we know exists right now. So if it's not needed, that's fine. If it's needed, it needs to go into one of the other committees type of thing.
All right. So I've got a queue. I have Chris, Rob, and Michelle. Chris?
A lot of the things in the green there, under what used to be the requirements, are really periodic. For example, the life cycle report, which I reviewed last year for the HAB, that comes out every three years. So it's not something that comes out on a regular basis that you have to have a standing committee to talk to. Like, once every three years, the EIC or the leadership team can ask someone, or appoint someone, or a team to review that for the HAB. The cleanup priorities is a once-a-year thing. Again, if, I don't think it should fall under a committee, but I think that's something that the leadership team or the EIC can ask someone to play the role that I've done this year, or someone can volunteer to play that role that I've done this year, to take the lead in getting out advice. And I think there's a number of other things that fall in there. They're very periodic. They only occur once every so often, and I think it's perfectly reasonable to have the EIC or the leadership team appoint someone or ask someone to take the lead in that. And I think that's where the leadership team has to be, and EIC has to be flexible and nimble, and it may be that they give it to a committee, that they decide that this emerging issue on a periodic basis should fall under a committee, or no, it's something that we need an IM team or a task force with some leader to form that to handle. But I think, I think if we want to talk about flexibility and nimbleness, instead of trying to lock everything down in iron or steel right now, I think that's the way we have to approach this type of thing.
All right. I've got Rob and Michelle in queue, and then I want to encourage you to move to items 11 and 12 on your agenda, so that you don't feel the squish of time. So, Rob?
Yes. I was under the impression that, again, as Chris points out, these things here would be reviewed by the EIC, and the EIC then either come up with an idea, oh, we should go directly to an IM group on this one, and ask somebody in the main body if they'd like to be an IM leader for this particular activity. Or, like you said, assign it to a specific committee to look at and end up with. So I thought it was pretty clear-cut that we were going to put the responsibility for cross-cutting issues into the EIC. Yep, I see. I just got that feeling.
That's right.
Behind me. So anyway, I just think that's probably-
Mike?
Here, here.
Mike's having an idea.
This button's not working. So I just want to make sure that, thank you, Tom, and thanks for those remarks, Rob. But in this approach, I just want to make sure that we give due consideration to the mechanics of how that's going to work, and I think that that was part of Tom's point, is it's great, but how does it play out? So, okay.
So-
Did your kid hold it there?
You should have waited till he was on the last two.
Non-efficiency.
That's good. That's good. All right, Michelle?
Chris and Rob both basically said what I was going to say, so.
Okay. All right. All right. So the last two things on the agenda, one has to do with getting the setup to make this a reality. Now, the concept needs to go through the full board, so we're a little bit ahead of that, but what do you think needs to happen if this comes to fruition, and then some next steps, and looking forward to some future meetings? So, Madam Chair?
So, some of the questions that we've had, so some of the questions that we've had were, how do people sign up for committees? I know from an operational, you know, from a project management perspective, to me, it's a simple, that should not be, doesn't need to be rocket science. We have Survey Monkey, and we can send out a survey, and saying, pick your committee. Or people can- saying, pick your committee. Or people can then do the same that they do today, which is go to Josh and say, I want to be on these committees. Does anybody have a preferred way to do it?
I've got, I've got Tom and Richard's cards up. Tom?
I really like the idea of having big signup sheets, you know, at the April meeting. As soon as this passes consensus, or passes the board, people rush to the boards and sign up. I mean, come on, it's exciting.
Should we have a prize for the first people who sign up?
There, you know, the HAB is, is approaching 30, and maybe we have a stress ball or something to, to say, if you sign up for committee on, on, at the meeting in person, you get a keychain.
Brian's in queue. Richard?
Well, similar to what Tom said, it might be a good idea to do something at the end of the HAB meeting for people to sign up, and then follow up with like a survey for the folks that were not in the room, or just people that had a run out, or for example. Side note, 30th anniversary, you guys should have a party.
That's right. We're at 29 right now, just so you know.
With keychains.
Keychains.
Historically, people stay at 29 for many, many years. Question, are we limiting participation in subcommittees? I mean, you know, we had said two before, we're just going to, so the person could conceivably sign up for all four?
Correct. We want participation in as many committees, or any committees, that a person wants to, to engage in. So we're not requiring, limiting to per person.
I'm going to refer to our eldest member of the HAB. What was the reason for limiting participation in subcommittees? Pam?
I, I, I could tell you, talking to Susan Lechbande, I've heard two reasons. One of, sorry, okay, just not close enough. There were two reasons that I've heard so far. One of them was associated with travel dollars. That travel dollars are limited, so you can only, the policy has been, you can only attend one committee meeting per seat. So that was one limiting factor. The other limiting factor was so that no one organization overwhelms the discussion inside of a committee meeting. So, and I, there may be other reasons, but those were the two that I've heard.
And the reason that the Public Involvement Committee was, was open to everybody was people would come to the HAB meeting, and the Public Involvement Committee met the day before the HAB meeting. So it wasn't an additional travel hit, was?
Right. But they also needed more people, so I think they were just really happy that anybody showed up. I, DOE, I think, should look at that travel issue. Because it is a budget issue. And, and, but now we can, we can participate remotely, but there may be a limitation in terms of how many bodies are traveling across the state and staying in a hotel. I don't know.
Basically, what we've done is separate the two issues, the two topics. Participation in committees, because you can participate in person or hybrid, no limitation, because we want participation. Whether you can travel or not, is under the travel process. So since we're now hybrid, we're, we're, we want everybody, we're embracing everybody, to show up to as many committees, participate, engage, be there. So that answer that question, Richard?
Esteban?
And I think, like, to refresh, you know, the, I think we got a new, a chair, a vice chair, and to quote our vice chair, like, I think, like, the, the organization, like, she was mentioning to me, they did a poetry contest, and it's struggle, like, I think, like, the attendance sometimes in the public meetings and everything. And I think that's one of the big things, right, that were, that's a big challenge, right? How do we get involvement, especially, I think, when it talks to folks, talking to your passions, and what's going to get you to participate, participation? I think, like, the public comment that was made, was that I think people are more aware of, are starting to become more aware of the situation. And I think, and I think, like how Michelle mentioned, the last meeting was, how sometimes our government institutions, you know, kind of had that one track mind, that sometimes, I, you know, things need to change. And I think for us, I think that's a big challenge, right? And that's a big question. How is it that you get more of the participation to solve these issues? Because sometimes they're not easy to deal with, right? That's a reality. And I think, like, our chairs, the chair said, is like, how do we get, basically, start answering these questions? Everybody wants, you know, the report that they got to present, what it's up in April, you know? And I think a lot of people want the ball rolling, but it's like, how are we, how is it going to happen? Because there's still, in my, you know, when I see that, there's still some things that are holding back stuff for more progress. So that's like, right now, I guess, talking to folks. And I think for me, the biggest thing, I said, like, I think, building this community, I think, these members saying, like, hey, how to build those trust, those relationships amongst each other, say, like, hey, how do we fill these gaps and these voids to get this worked, then, that it's needed, right?
I don't have anybody in queue.
Okay, so we're going to have a big, we're going to have a big, bunch of big sheets hanging on the wall in April, at the April Board Meeting, assuming success, and that we reach consensus on this change. So I, everybody nodding, yes?
I've got Ryan and Rob. Are you nodding?
Just a side note, I think when it comes to the agenda distribution stuff, obviously the people that sign up for the committees will get the distributions. But I know the existing distribution lists for agendas, like, I have my different lists of ecology, subject matter experts that get various agendas. So I just wanted to remind, I know EPA's not here, EPA, DOE, and ecology, and maybe also just the general HAB list that you guys maintain, that we'll want to make sure we update, not just the HAB members with the new committees, but, again, if it passes, but also, like, my staff, and make sure that we're updating that accordingly, if, depending on scope and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. There, there will be, there will be an email to the agencies that say, which SMEs do you want on what committee lists? So, yeah, that's coming. Rob and Pam?
I'm pretty much in favor of what you've decided there, and I, I'll go along with it. But back to a little bit about the meetings. This next meeting is in Yakima, correct? Are you expecting or allowing Hanford, or people who live in the Tri-Cities to hotel in Yakima? Is that a reasonable thing? Or is that not a reasonable thing?
That was my understanding.
That is a totally reasonable thing.
70 miles.
Those folks who are local, who don't normally travel, we strongly urge you to read the Thursday HAB happenings. There's a link on there to set up a travel account, so that you could be reimbursed for your road trip to Yakima.
Okay, thank you.
So you're buying drinks after the meeting?
I'm confused, because earlier in the day, when we looked at a timeframe, we looked at these new committees kicking in in the fall, not in April. So I think we need a little time to work through this, get everything set up. I think April's a little bit too soon. And particularly because there's still some work for the executive, whatever it is, the committee, pardon me, the Ops Work Group, needs a chance to get together, have some conversations. So I, I'd put that off a little.
What is the implication? I'm looking for an answer around the table, because I don't know. Richard?
Just clarification, we're going to approve the new, in April, implementation is the next phase, which, which we haven't discussed, correct?
So you've got between April, between consensus and April, and convening in October to sign up for the meetings. You don't have to do it only on that day.
Right. And the goal is to start one October with the new work plan, to start the new fiscal year, new work plan, and move forward. So.
So is it reasonable, so the, the Leadership Workshop, which is basically the leadership group, the chairs and the vice chairs of all the committees, and the national liaison, meet, this year it's scheduled for June. And so it's usually a two day thing, and that's when the work plan for the next fiscal year is created. So is it reasonable to assume that that June meeting would create a work plan using the new concept?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's why I'm in queue.
Okay, so clarify whatever it was I just messed up.
So that's sort of the next question on the list here, is, we're gonna, we're gonna have this signup ongoing, assuming consensus happens in April. Now, the signup going between, from April to October. And we're going to have, in the interim, a work plan being developed for October to September. So you're going to have people signing up for committees that don't have a work plan yet. Typically, the work plan is a collaboration between the TPA agencies and the EIC, the leadership group of chairs and vice chairs of all the committees. And the chairs and vice chairs of the committees are talking about the work plans for their committees. Now we're in this weird spit. So do we either accept that the existing leadership, whoever is elected by the current committees, is authorized to take a first stab at work plans for these new committees? Or do we have to have elections before June in committees that don't exist yet? That's the quandary.
Rob, I saw your card. Okay, so Rob, Pam, Richard, Ryan.
So, so we have several committees with active IM teams, working on activities through this work plan year. We're going to continue as if no changes through until September. Okay. Okay, so our advice has got to be done.
Or the new committee can choose to adopt the IM team.
Okay. Pam?
I don't think that you need to engage the new leadership in this planning session. The planning sessions are challenging, complicated. And I think you need to rely on the leadership you have now, that has been in place. And they can set the stage, and all, change can happen. But set the stage, and then you've got something to move into when you choose new leadership, and, and go forward. And I, I don't suggest trying to include extra people, because, I mean, it's hard. I mean, it's a long day, and it's hard. And people bring their years of experience to, okay, what did we learn? What went wrong? What went right? How do we change that? So that is my strong opinion. Thank you.
Richard?
I guess my, my observation is, we've taken some of the scope from these two teams and just moved them over there. It, it won't make a, I don't expect there's anything went over to the, to the fluid that you're working on anyway, except maybe where. I mean, if that's where, where advice goes, you know, that would be appropriate. But I don't think it's going to be that big a disruption. You know, anything the Health and Safety was working on would fall under fluid type of thing. So that's.
Chris?
We've just had elections for the PIC committee and the tank waste. And I think the leadership that was elected for those ought to carry over to their respective committees here, because the, the new tank waste committee, which I've already forgotten the name of, and the new PIC committee, which I can't quite read up there, are basically handling the same kind of things. And so I think the leadership is there. We do have to elect the leadership for the fluid team. We do maybe have to elect a leadership for the new HSEP team. And I think Tom is going to have elections tomorrow. So I think we'll have both technical committees and the PIC committee with, with leadership that can carry on. They've already started. They've been in their, not PIC, but PIC was charged with, with coming up with some kind of a plan by, by Ruth in their elections, and they're starting on it. Rob and, and his VP are, are well versed in the issues with tanks. And, and Rob, and Tom here, and I think Larry, who's ever elected tomorrow, will, will probably be pretty well versed on, on what's happening in, in the new RAP committee. But I think we can go forward with those without any loss of anything. And the BCC committee is going to be dissolved after we issue our, our advice, get consensus in our work priority advice. So that's neither here nor there. So I, I really think we can go forward right off the bat, at least with three committees. And then the fluid and the HSEP, you know, would have to decide where those, when elections are going to be for those.
Ryan?
I think the only caveat to that, Chris, is the HSEP, I thought we, we merged that scope into Community Outreach and Engagement for the Health and Safety.
Okay.
I think he was talking about Karm, AKA Charm.
The, the members are going to end up being charming. Okay, I've got Tom, Tom, and Michelle.
I just wanted to say, I completely agree with what Chris just said, with caveat from Ryan. I think we should keep the leadership that we're electing or have elected for this year going forward.
All right. Tom?
We also have the opportunity to orient elections with, dare I say, the packet process. If members are going to start on October 1st, and we have new committees that start on October 1st, maybe it makes sense to have elections in those new committees at the first meeting sometime after October 1st, and sort of change the election cycle for committees, so that it more mirrors the packet, instead of doing it in January, February.
You are very optimistic.
I am extremely.
Let's just elect leadership.
I am extremely optimistic.
Okay. And Michelle is one of your new members on the leadership team. And she's laughing still.
Well, I originally put myself up to just clarify that although there is that giant orange Health and Safety under Community Outreach, Health and Safety was one of those that just ended up on everybody's committee. Ours just happens to be big in orange, instead of the little blue ones for everybody else. So, so I don't think that that, like, just became our responsibility, not it. But to Tom's point, too, about the waiting to try and align with new people, I mean, I'm, I am a new HAB member. Tracy's a new HAB member. So maybe we were just, you know, kind of gluttons for punishment to say, sure, we'll, we'll chair a committee. But I, I don't know that it is as important to align them, because you do have to give those, those new folks a little bit of time to acclimate and figure out what's happening. So you probably won't have as many, you know, suckers as Tracy and I.
I'm bringing lollipops to your next meeting. So in terms of logistics, where are we?
We've taken care of the logistics. New committees will start on one October. Committee elections will be held next year during the committees, the normal committee process after January 1. We'll carry over committee chairs and vice chairs as they fit into the current, the new structure for the period of October through December 31st, until the next, well, I should say, until the next committee elections after, in 2024. And then people will, can start signing up at the April meeting, and have, will have, have opportunities to sign up via Survey Monkey and Josh, and any other way, up until, as long as they want to. And ideally, we get everybody signed up for a committee. At least. So that takes, are there any other considerations, questions for logistics? Yes, sir?
I completely agree with what you said, Susan, with one addition. I would suggest that we keep Chris on as part of the leadership team all the way through this process.
I think he's going to be our funding czar.
There is precedent for keeping past, or outgoing chairs and vice chairs on the EIC. There is precedent for keeping past or outgoing chairs and vice chairs on the EIC for the sort of transition period. So I think that would be appropriate to still do.
Anybody else?
Susan, could you tell us more about your article and where it's gonna be and things of that sort? Cause we all kind of contributed and, or some of us did and.
You did.
And give us a final showdown. Did you get a star, gold star?
I did. I got, okay, so there's two, one of the first things that happened after elections in January is I got informed that as the chair, I had to write an article for the Business Journal, Tri-City Business Journal, progress, Hanford Progress Edition that is put out every April. So I put together an article. I was actually, Christina Lord gave me a gold star from Business Journal for being the first person to submit an article for the journal. So Gary and Ryan, you got a hard, there's a tough line for you to follow that. So basically it's, and Mia helped also, Brian helped. And so we just, we had put together an article and I sent it out to, I think to the leadership team, but I'll make it available for everybody else. But basically talking about the accomplishments and challenges for the last year and our goals for 2023. And then at the same time as I'm doing that, in two weeks, we go, Mia and I and DOE goes back to headquarters for the semi, there's twice a year is a meeting of all EM, SSAB chairs and vice chairs. And we're going back to DC. So Mia and I will be meeting with all of our counterparts for all the other site boards. And we're already putting our shopping lists together of questions to ask while we're there and information to follow up. And I got a great deal of help from Rob and Chris on that, putting that slide together. So thank you. And I'll make that available also.
So Jeff and Esteban.
So as Chair of the Oregon Hanford Cleanup Board, I was also asked to write an article. And so I had a lot of help from Max Wood and ChatGPT. Thank you.
Great. I'll look forward to reading yours. Esteban.
Yeah, and I think that's what I want to point out, cause I remember when I, I became part of the, of the board, you know, I, I reached out to like, you know, what was it? You know, it's just not the folks that are here. I think like, I think Pam mentioned, I, you know, I talked to Emmett. You know, he was great in updating me, you know, Bob Su Yamo. I think, I think that's a big thing, you know, it's a community. I think y'all don't forget that it's people that have been investing their time, their efforts in this process, right? So I think that's a big scope of things too, that we should not forget everybody. And I think it's along, it's a whole, it's a process, right? But I think people have a lot to contribute, especially think like Steve was mentioning, he told me the story of Sterling's and it used to be a big parking lot. Now you got a big view that, you know, everybody can enjoy.
So, anything else?
I'll just say that people realize that we have accomplished something like 19 meetings this year, this past year, and over 3,000 volunteer hours by this committee this last year. Very impressive.
The, the independent sector actually calculates the value of a volunteer hour in the US nationally and state by state. Washington is one of the highest in terms of the number and it's about 33 bucks an hour. So if you do that times whatever that number is, it's a big number.
There you go, Chris. You can go talk to your wife and tell her how much you're making.
Are we at good of the order here? Are we done? I have a question.
We've got Richard's card up and here. Richard?
I was asked a question earlier when we first started and I just wanna let everyone know. Health and safety has, has really been pushing traffic safety for years. And I just wanna let you know that Ben Franklin Transit, working with the contractors, have done a survey and we actually ended up with almost 800 responses from Hanford workers. And the Ben Franklin Transit will initiate a, and I said will, initiate a pilot bus route out to Hanford. They're trying to figure out where, from A to B. I mean, that's the question. Which would, will return, assuming, assuming there are no DOE roadblocks prone in the way, but technically it should work. So working out the details and exactly when they'll be able to implement it, we'll find out. So.
So the last question in this section, how will committees develop work plans for fiscal year 2023 and/or 2024? So I think we kind of talked about it, Chris or Tom?
So part of it is the existing committees need to have the discussion prior to the leadership workshop. And so the board can put forth what's important to the board as well as the TPA agencies putting forth their ideas. So it'll be a standing item on whenever your committee's meeting next. And I think RAP has it on the agenda for June, first week in June, I think, to talk through it.
And tanks meets in May.
Tanks and pick in May.
So, okay. All right, next steps in board business, next steps in committee optimization. I think we've, is there anything we haven't covered in moving, how we're gonna move forward as far as the committees? Before Mike, before Chris.
So I've been given some thought to the, the approach for health and safety under community outreach. Oh, it resonates with me from a perspective of environmental and environmental safety, safety of the public, right? And, but, but what is missing really there is the worker safety component. And I haven't had the opportunity to be in the presence of Becky Holland for a while, but I think if I would be, that would be something that she would communicate. And I just wanna make sure that, that we're clear in, in our understanding when we're talking about that safety throughout each of these committees as they're prescribed with their scope substantially includes a worker, safety and health component. And that if there's something that's emerging or arising either out of those committees as that is a concern or backwards, or the other way, that is a concern of, of a subject matter expert such as Becky or others, that then you take a look at how you're gonna ramp up, for lack of a better term, a, a task force and then float across all those committees so that, so that those viewpoints and perspectives are, are captured and then potentially acted on. Cause we've been talking a lot about health and safety, but we haven't placed an emphasis in, in our terminology on that also includes worker safety. As was stated by several, it's, it's at the core of everything that we do. But I just wanted to make sure that, that there was that understanding and if there are alternate viewpoints, I'd be appreciative hearing it.
I'm gonna jump to Pam because she asked, we skipped her.
Actually, it's a, a different question. It's in the next steps optimization. When, when we get appointed to the HAB, we get a ring binder with lots of information in it, including contact information. But then when it's not our cycle to get reappointed, we don't get an update on the names, email addresses and phone numbers of the new members, which makes it difficult to communicate with them. So whoever has that master list, if you would send it to everyone when there's new appointments like we have this year? It would be really helpful.
I thought, I thought we did updates for people who had binders. So we'll double check that.
Okay, I might have missed it, being the retired person that I am. Thank you.
Pam, I think they were available at orientation and I think you were out of town at the time.
Maybe what we do is we have an orientation, then we bring the packet stuff to the next HAB meeting for the people that weren't at orientation and that wanna switch up the binder with the updated information.
Chris.
I think one of the next steps is each of the four committees up there needs to appoint a person and communicate that person to Susan. Because as the ops group takes these statements, mission statements, whatever, and kind of wordsmith them and, and try and make them consistent and so on and so forth. We can feed them back to that person and that person can take the responsibility for disseminating them around the respective committees as far as they know them, to make sure that the committees get the input and there's input from, from all you that you agree with the words or you're gonna revise the word somewhat and feed it back to Susan. So that way, it's not just an ops group dictating, dictating the words through our wordsmithing, but you're in the loop and saying you agree with it or know you wanna modify it slightly or greatly or whatever. Or having thought about it for a longer period of time than, than we've had at this committee, you can add some things or whatever. But I think that needs to be a, a key next step.
I agree that there's never the goal of the ops work group to take ownership away from the HAB board and the HAB members that are in this room and those that are not in this room.
And I'd add, instead of just a single point of contact for each of those four groups, you know, anyone who was at this committee as a whole can get an email with a summary of what the ops group came up with on tomorrow, Thursday. And have a chance to weigh in before April to make sure, hey, you missed this. And, you know, it would be ugly with replyalls if we had a whole bunch of those. But if it's minor stuff, you know, we could, we could make it work.
But I'd still like a single point of contact for each of the groups. That way, if we don't receive anything from a particular group, we know who to touch. So that, you know, we're not touching everybody in the room. I just wanna make sure that we, we do close the loop and that we work this with you, not taking ownership of it away from you. You own this product. We all together own this product. All right, Richard, I think.
What I was getting at, as far as a health and safety scope, a lot of it falls under the infra, the, the fluid aspect of, you know, the infrastructure. But particular for the projects, worker safety has to be specific to the project. And, and, you know, that's been sometimes, we've been joint with, with whether it's tank farms or central plateau. But, you know, a lot of the things are just, safety is across the board and it's, it's part of the, the infrastructure. You know, whether it's maintenance, a few other things that are in there. So I, I don't think that's a, it's not going away in any aspect.
Dan.
A question I made from Mike or Gary. And first a comment, worker health and safety is very highly regulated and very highly looked after. There are ongoing issues confined space entry, heat stress, and I guess I would say vapors, certainly. But can, we get briefings on a lot of stuff from Hanford, but we don't get briefings on worker health and safety. Are there reports we should be reading or are there incidents that, that didn't make the paper? I mean, a lot of things that you do hear about, like the plutonium contamination that got offsite. It was very expensive, had no health consequence whatsoever. I mean, those doses were trivial to people off sites. So what are the health and safety problems that the Hanford Advisory Board should be worried about? I mean, vapors is one that I've already spoken about here. And I would, I would recommend to DOE that they develop the exposure to risk monitor that Patel had in 1992, where a worker can breathe into this and it'll tell you what he's exhaling. And if he's exhaling any vapor, we can recognize this being associated with tanks. That would be worker health and safety. But I, I don't know what else there is. I mean, that, that hard hat and handrail safety, the, you know, the stuff that, that we normally deal with, that is highly regulated. And we're not losing lives out there and we're not having a lot of lost time injuries. So I mean, yes, it's great to be concerned about this, but can you help us understand the problems that aren't solved? Besides vapors?
Yeah, I can't help you understand the problems that aren't solved today. If you were to ask me that question a few years ago, when my principal job was a cause analyst and accident investigator on the side, I, I would have had a different perspective and it would have been contractor centric with the exception of a few instances. So I think that's where the input or the perspectives of, of a Becky Holland or Becky Holland in her role to be able to articulate, hey, these are the things that are seeing, to begin to help shape your questions. I'm, I'm not trying to dodge it. I'm, I'm just saying that, that at this point in time, I, I don't think that I can answer the question. I know that, that vehicle safety remains something that, that is at the top of our list. I mean, the reality from, and I, it's, we, we have people that have a difficulty driving the speed limit, right? And so, you know, you're, you're working with, you're working with a number of contractors who've come together historically and put a lot of horsepower and money into figuring out, how do we influence those folks positively? So that the safety of the workforce is, is, is assured. You know, that we don't have people that are getting hurt on the way to work or coming home from work. That some of the data would, would surprise you, you know, we've got people that are driving triple digits on, from a speed limit where it's 60 miles an hour and we, they're at 115. So, so there are always those opportunities. Aside from the rest, Dan, I, I really don't have much to share. I've probably said more than I should. I'm trying to fill in the gap, but I, I think that it first starts with a conversation with someone who's close to the boots on the ground to help shape those perspectives.
Okay.
I, I can just comment a little bit of that because it's, it's very important out there. Lockout, tagout procedures, that's very important. Yeah, they're regulated, but as they follow, stop work orders is another one. The beryllium issues, we still got beryllium at the site. We still have to pay attention to that. We still have asbestos buildings and walls. That's still at the site. So all of those are health and safety issues that we need to pay attention to. And I do think that Becky has, has gone after, after a lot of those. And I'm just listing a couple of the, the ones that I come off the top of my head.
Dan, you good? Okay. Upcoming meetings, tomorrow we have RAP. If anybody's interested in attending the RAP meeting, I'm sure Tom will welcome you with open arms.
Absolutely. It's at the Ecology's office just down the street here. So.
And then the next full board meeting is in April, on 19th and 20th of April in Yakima, as you've heard previously. Gary, Mike, do you wanna say anything about that meeting? What to, since it is kind of different?
The agenda is still being developed and when we have more information, we'll be happy to send it out as quickly as we can. But in the meantime, make sure that you contact the folks that are listed in the HAB happenings to set up your travel account if you don't have one already.
So I hope to see everybody in Yakima. Hopefully the snow will stop. Any other business, any other questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, I think this was a really great meeting and it was great getting to know some of you again. Mike, you wanna close us out?
Yeah, just checking the queue. I'd also like to say that our time together today is possible because folks communicated their feedback. Raised their hand and said, I have a question about this. I have a concern about this. I've got a comment about this. And what, what it caused was, is it caused a, a well-intended and highly productive group who was probably about two steps ahead of our headlights to step back and bring everybody together in a room. And I'm very pleased with the folks who attended today and what you've accomplished, the level of clarity that's been achieved. And I know it's, it, there, there's still gonna be some questions, right? But instead of having eight folks that could serve as change champions and carry a message forward to the board as a whole, that there are now considerably more and, and I appreciate your time. This work is important. Again, I'll, I'll end with this. I think it's helpful that you're taking the time to slow down so that you can speed up. And I, I do hope that you're able to speed up soon, cause I know it's on, on your hearts and minds too.
And Mike, thanks for helping the nuns out this morning.
Absolutely. We're adjourned.